Mr. Lord, like always, ten. One nation under God, in the great law of the Lord.
Mr. Wardy, read the roll, please. Mr. Henry Davis.
Henry is here.
Mr. LaFountain.
Here.
Mrs. Fuzzello.
Present.
Dr. Werner.
Present.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Present.
Mr. Carson.
Present.
Councilmember Rouse.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Dieter.
Present, Mr. Wardy.
Nine present.
Get the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
The Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of June thirteenth, two thousand and eleven meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed Derek Dieter, David Werner.
I knew that we sent the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor? Aye. In the opposition. Under Special Business, Mr. Wardy. Eleven forty-five, please. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana publicly commending and honoring Phil St. Clair for his dedicated service as the longest-serving superintendent of the city's Parks and Recreation Department. Really? All right. Councilmember Fuzzello.
Thank you. It's been, oh, about five years now that I've been going to, to Park Department Board Meetings. And as time has gone on, I've been more and more impressed with all the things they do and how well they do them. And it's a lot of really talented people led by Phil St. Clair, their leader, and are very talented and fine parks superintendent. So I do hope that, just because he's given an hon- being given an honor for the amount of time he's been there, that he's there for a very long time. And could I have Phil St. Clair and anybody who came with him come up here? A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana publicly commending and honoring Phil St. Clair for his dedicated service as the longest-serving superintendent of the city's Park and Recreation Department. Whereas, the South Bend Parks and Recreation Department oversees and maintains fifty-seven local parks, which provide a wide variety of activities for residents and visitors to our community. From the Potawatomi Zoo constructed in nineteen oh-two, the oldest accredited zoo in the state of Indiana, the East Race Water Way constructed in nineteen eighty-four, which is the first man-made whitewater rapids facility in North America, to the Bellevue Softball Complex, three city golf courses, seven recreation centers, two city swimming pools, a skate park, a greenhouse, a conservatory, Kobolewski Stadium, O'Brien Fitness Center, and over twelve hundred acres of parkland. And whereas, the South Bend Common Council recognizes that on January twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-three, Mayor Joseph E. Kernan appointed Philip St. Clair to be the superintendent of the Parks and Recreation Department, who has become the longest-serving park superintendent in the city's history. Following in the footsteps of former superintendents Carl Stevens nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety-two, Jim Seitz nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty-seven, Charles Van De Veer nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy, and Ralph Newman nineteen forty-eight to nineteen sixty-seven. And whereas, Phil oversees a hundred and thirty full-time and over four hundred part-time and seasonal park and recreation employees, monitors over a twelve million annual budget, sees the twenty-five thousand acres of parkland, and one hundred and twenty-five street islands are regularly mowed, helps see that over fifteen thousand yards of leaves are hauled away each fall, assists the street department each winter in removing snow from park facilities, parking lots, and trails, removes three hundred tons of trash from park facilities each year, and sees that new plantings are made, especially after storms. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section one. The South Bend Common Council publicly honors and congratulates Phil St. Clair, the longest serving park superintendent in the city's history, whose vision has resulted in the Parks and Recreation Department receiving many state and national recognitions for excellence. Section two. The Common Council further recognizes that Phil St. Clair has served as a volunteer coach of Little League Baseball and YMCA basketball teams for fifteen years, has coached over seven years as a Riley High School baseball coach, was named by the Indiana Parks and Recreation Association in two thousand and nine the Professional of the Year, the first time a South Bend park superintendent has served on the Board of Regents of the National Recreation and Parks Association, while working to carry out the Parks and Recreation Department's goal that we build community through people, parks, and programs. Section three. The council wishes Phil a true jarhead, who exemplifies the willingness to put duty before self, continued success in providing leadership, vision, and innovative ideas to South Bend's outstanding parks and recreation programs, and wishes him continued years of great times together with his wife Deb, their two sons, and their many family members and friends. Section four. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the council and approval by the mayor. I ask you please to pass this resolution preferably by acclamation. And I'd appreciate it if you'd speak to us and explain what a jarhead is, because it sounds kind of...
Thank you. Actually, a jarhead is a Marine, and I almost had the haircut for it, but I'll have to really try. Well, just all I can say is, is thank you for the recognition. There's, over this many years, it's hard to stand up here and remember everybody by name, but it really starts with the staff. I've just been blessed with a truly great staff, very, very committed to our goal and our mission in parks over the years. They work very hard. And fortunately for me, I've had them pretty much my whole tenure as park superintendent, and just grateful to have a great team. And I, I wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for the staff. I also want to thank Mayor's Phil Kernan, who appointed me to the job, with virtually no experience in parks and recreation, and he just took a chance on me, and fortunately, I think it worked out well. For Mayor Steve, who has been a big advocate for parks over the years and has always been supportive of the efforts that we try to pursue in parks and recreation. And I want to thank the council over the years. The council has always been great to work with. I've always enjoyed my conversations and discussions with, with all of you, and it just, it just makes it, makes it happen. And I guess that's how I ended up being here this many years. I also want to thank my wife Deb here with my granddaughter Lily. She's the one that has to put up with the weekend special events, the evening meetings and things like that. She's been really good at tolerating a lot of those hours, but also couldn't do without her, and so I want to thank her. I'm glad my, my sons are here, my daughter-in-law's here, and I have two grandkids here, and they're all here to support me, and I appreciate that very much. And again, I think a lot of these things start with the family and with the good staff, so, you know, thank you very much for this recognition.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we come back to the council, anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Councilmembers, any comments before we take?
Yeah, I'd like to say, Phil, thanks for all you've done. A lot of people probably don't remember when we had the unique, what was it, how was it, Recreation Department, the only one in the state that was joined with the school corporation, and I think in the mid-eighties, maybe Karen probably remembers this, it had to break apart due to budget concerns, and a lot of people thought that could be the demise of programs, but despite budget cuts and everything, you really built up the park system, especially the pay-as-you-go programs, and you've done a great job, and thank you for everything you've done, and inheriting people like Paul McMinn, supervisor, no, he's a fellow friend of mine, but, no, thanks for all you've done, and you've done a great job there.
I have one question, Phil. What did you go through boot camp in?
San Diego, NCRD.
All right. Okay, I, I'd like to thank, there's a couple of things that escaped our resolution. One is the, not hundred, but thousands of hours that Phil has put in at the then at Ethnic Festival, and then the summer in the city. A lot of people don't know just the countless number of hours that he spent away from home and his family to put that together all night, the thousands of hours that he, that he put in at the Belleville for the tournaments they have there all summer, where people come across the country to come to play, and South Bend, whether it be sixteen-inch or twelve-inch fast pitch, low pitch, have done a tremendous job there. This is the youth program that we have, and he's helped start for the golf program, and some people really don't know that he still holds the record at Marquette for strikeouts. As a batter, not as a pitcher, so that's where we are. Again, I appreciate all the work. It's, like you said, endless, but you have great people working under you, and I appreciate. By far, South Bend has the best parks, as far as I'm concerned in the country, and you guys do a great job of keeping them up. So I appreciate all your work, even though you are Yankee fans.
I want to thank you also for even your current work with what you did the past few months with building up the graffiti program that we are launching out this year for the whole city, and it's been nice working with you. You have innovative ideas, and I'd like to continue to work with you in the future, so congratulations to you.
I'd like to make motion we adopt this by acclamation.
Motion in favor?
Aye.
Under reports in city offices, Councilmember Davis, Vice President Davis, you got ahold of me in regards to some issues in the six district concerning some streets, and he got ahold of Gary Gilat to give an explanation, just give us a quick update on some of the things that are going down there on Brookfield Street.
Gary Gilat, Public Works Director, offices on the thirteenth floor of this building. I think the operative word there was brief. I did receive the request to look into the traffic situation at the intersection of Scott and Duvale. Carl Littrell pulled the police accident reports. There's been one accident in, in the last many years involving a motorcycle where the, the driver left the vehicle in the street, apparently blew the two-way stop sign. Traffic counts don't come up to the level necessary for a four-way stop, so Carl indicates under the manual of uniform traffic control devices, so people can have consistent expectations for where we have stop signs. We would not place a four-way stop here. The two-way stop is what meets warrants. There's a pattern of two-way stops on Duvale, and what I asked him is, would you consider under traffic calming a basket weave every other? And he, he really thinks that that would cause more accidents than it would help, because people are so used to the pattern, giving preference to the folks who are on the hill, harder to stop on the hill. When he talked to the, the people who brought the issue to your attention, did speak to those folks, they said there's, there's only an occasional speeder, most of the folks are abiding by the speed limit, they were looking for ways to make it safer. I think perhaps an occasional show of presence by the police department and some education amongst the neighbors on let's obey the speed limit and, and stop for the two-way stop. That concludes my remarks.
Is there any way I can get a little brief summary of that, so I can take it around to the neighbors and pass that out to those neighbors right there? And I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
I'll email that to you tomorrow.
Okay, and I'll print it off and I'll take it up with the neighbors myself.
President.
Well, thank you, so kindly.
President. Gary, a really quick, thank you for what you guys have done with the street department over there at LaSalle Park. I noticed that there was some, I don't know if that's asphalt or, you know, gravel or what have you, but I've noticed that there was, you know, more of a layout for the parking on the side of the road versus people parking on the lawn. I've noticed that because of the material that was laid out, it, it appears that there are a lot more puddles that are happening right there where the material was laid. I don't know if it's supposed to mesh over time and get hard or what have you, but I did, I've noticed that a lot more water is standing now rather than it was before, but it looks a lot better, I can tell you that, and thank you for following up on that and making sure that happened, but...
Okay. We'll check into the spot drainage issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, resolve, committee to hold.
To move.
Second. On favor. Committee to hold is in session. This is unfortunately the council's meeting where we have second reading and public hearing. We'll have a presenter come after hearing the committee report, and then after that we'll have public hearing, either for or against the various items. Mr. Wardy, would you please read Substitute Bill thirty-two-eleven? Public hearing on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana amending Chapter thirteen, Article ten of the South Bend Municipal Code Concerning Firearms. Motion to hear the amended version? Some of... For the motion in the second to hear the amended version of Substitute Bill thirty-two-eleven, all in favor, so indicate by singing aye. Aye. Opposed, have it, the motion carries. Is there a committee report?
Yes, the House and Public Safety Committee held a committee meeting as well as a public hearing on Substitute Bill thirty-two dash eleven, and we sent it to the full council with a favorable recommendation, recommendation, but also with some major concerns as well.
Thank you. Would the presenter please state her name and address?
Good evening, Aladeen DeRose, City Legal Department with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. At its last session, the Indiana General Assembly passed Senate Enrolled Act two ninety-two. This bill essentially eliminates, or practically eliminates, the ability of local government to restrict or control firearms, firearm accessories and ammunition. The bill, the Senate Enrolled Act takes effect July first, and by that date, cities are no longer permitted to regulate as they have in the past. Substitute Bill thirty-two-eleven conforms to the requirements of the General Accounts, General Assembly by eliminating the restrictions that South Bend had previously placed on firearms. It allows the one exception that the General Assembly permits, and that is the public display of a firearm at a public meeting. So that is one area where the General Assembly allows local government to regulate, and Senate, Substitute Bill thirty-two-eleven does that. So we believe that Senate, that Substitute Bill thirty-two-eleven essentially allows South Bend to conform to the requirements of state law. Any questions?
Thank you. Well, council questions, Mr. Davis.
Yes, could you please clarify how that's going to impact us here in, in our council, in this building? Could you please let the public share with them what that means?
No public display of firearms is permitted in the council room during a public meeting, that is, a meeting of your body. Even if a person has a permit to carry a firearm, that person may not publicly display, or intentionally, I'm sorry, intentionally, display that firearm during the meeting. Obviously, an issue arises as to what is intentional and what is non-intentional, and I think that's determined case by case, but clearly, if, if a firearm is visible, that's an intentional. If it's visible by virtue of an action taken by an individual, the firearm has been publicly displayed, the firearm can then be confiscated, and that is all as the General Assembly permits.
Want to follow up to that one? Due to the nature of the fact that we are connected to the judge's chambers, could you...
It's, it's a separate, this, that's a separate, this is a separate exception that we're providing.
Okay, I understand.
And, and I apologize, there is one further amendment that we would like, it's minor, and therefore we do not have a, a substitute version, but it appears at page two.
Mr. Ross, we did, Mr. Wagner did provide that as a potential in the second motion, because we had accepted the motion two weeks ago, he advertised it properly to include the Parks Department, and then tonight we accepted it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Got a question from council?
Yeah, I, I was just thinking my colleagues on my left about this, he's in the school attorney, and so I was just wondering, working at this bill, and after going in line with what the state has to run on, and even speaking with council attorney, we were, I just had an idea that, or not even an idea, a thought, why, if this is going to maybe adversely affect the way that we do business here as a local government, why would we accept the, the law as this is what we do now?
Why do we accept the...
Yeah, I guess that would be the reason of my question, why are we, we don't have any recourse whatsoever?
Well, one of the problems with the, and that is, probably depends on the perspective, but what the General Assembly provides is that any municipality that violates this provision can be sued by a member of the public, and the consequences of that can be fairly significant. Damages are provided at three times attorney fees, which is a, in, in terms of this type of litigation, could be a substantial amount of money, and we don't want to run that risk, and it's appropriate to be in conformity with what the General Assembly has decreed for the state.
So we have a situation where we're, there's a fear because we may be sued.
We...
However, there's a fear that we may be gunned down during council meeting because someone didn't like what we said.
And I think the, the response to that is that, that our legislators need to know that there is, that there are concerns and, and safety issues, and perhaps the legislature would like to, might address that.
So would take me back to my initial question about us accepting this right now and allowing that to take place, more for me, you know, but accepting it now, we'll say that we're okay with it, and then something happens here that is not favorable, or something deadly happens, then we go talk to our state legislator? Is that how that works?
The, the...
I'm just trying to be, because the whole gun thing has like gotten, you know, all the violence that has happened, I've seen it happen in Florida, you know, just all kinds of stuff that happens, and, you know, you can't control people, but we put things in place that are proactive that stops, you know, violence.
Regrettably, the, the legislature was very clear that by July one, no further, no further regulation by state, by local government would be permitted.
So we, what supersedes the state? Would that be Supreme Court, am I correct, or federal government?
Well, the federal, the Indiana courts would determine whether the legislation is unconstitutional or whether the, whether the General Assembly exceeded its bounds of, its limits on legislative matters when it enacted this bill.
Because I would hate to feel powerless, and right now I'm feeling like me as an elected official at the local level is powerless in this type of situation, and I don't like that. And so that's why I'm asking these questions. I feel like that, you know, you're elected to a position, just as well as a state legislator and beyond, that you have a right to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America as well as the state of Indiana, you know, and that's our hope that we read, and I would just like, feel like that, you know, passing something through that, you know, has the perception of, you know, or is, you know, scary, don't like a better words, and then just dealing with it after something happens that's not good.
And I, I share your concerns, council member. I, I, we're not in a position to say that we should do something that's contrary to the, to the state statute at this point.
All right, thank you.
I, I have, I'm sure that the state had been taking...
Attorney DeRose, I think I cut you off prior to Mr. Davis's question, if you have something else you wanted to add to your presentation?
No, my, what I was, I had forgotten about the minor amendment, and that was what I was preparing to do. Oh, I, I do, I, I did have another matter. The parks, we have regulated for weapons in the parks, and as part of this Substitute Bill, we have, excuse me, eliminated in the public parks the reference to firearms pursuant to the state act.
Mr. Davis, you had a question related to your presentation?
And adding on to, Councilmember Henry Davis's discuss, are you aware of anybody pursuing this kind of action to the Supreme Court of the state of Indiana to oppose it, to take them to think that the state legislators have overstepped their boundaries in making this kind of decision? Are you aware, have you heard of any other municipalities or anything else?
I have not yet, but I'm certain that there's discussions going on everywhere.
Is there any kind of, when you hear those discussions, or what would be the role of advising us to join with them? Because I think it would be, at least from hearing from a lot of my colleagues, they can speak for themselves, but I think the safety of us would love to see if that's the, those of us who would like to join in with that, to help those who are doing that, to proceed with those kind of issues.
We'd be happy in our legal department to oppose various...
I want to recognize Mayor of the City of South Bend, Mayor Lickin.
Regrettably, and I share all of your concerns on this issue, municipalities are creations of the state, so the powers that we have to enact legislation are given to us by the state. If the state chooses to take away ability to act in certain areas, it's, that's not an issue that is debatable under the Constitution of the state of Indiana. So I think what we need to do is to continue to speak with our other cities and towns throughout the state, with counties as well, and to begin to provide additional evidence and reasons to legislators why they overreached in this particular bill. Certainly, we should be able to protect public meetings in a manner that may not be possible under, under current state law, but...
I want to recognize Mr. Dieter, please. Mr. Dieter? I think there's some confusion. If our council attorney can explain with, with Judge Gage about people, can you explain the provisions of that, because I think there's some confusion...
of that, because I think there's some confusion about people bringing weapons here.
Not directly related to this organ that's before us. I think the concerns that are being raised are of a general nature as far as public safety. And on June twenty-first, Judge Gatch, the circuit court judge, as well as Judge Copelandis, the head of the Superior Court, identified specifically the court complexes in St. Joseph County. As a part of that decision, the commissioners are working with the city of South Bend through the rest of this week, because the law takes effect on Friday, to develop policies to protect individuals of the public, as well as those that work in those buildings, with regard to metal detectors, and having properly sworn officers at those facilities for ingress and egress. So again, all of your concerns, if you have those, continue to share those with the legal department, with the mayor, and myself, so that we can make sure that those are shared with the commissioners.
Well, there's a cost associated with that, am I correct?
That is correct.
And so, if there's a cost associated with it, and we're obviously getting less and less money from the state government to take care of business at the local levels, would it be in our best interest not to, or continue this over? I know, to I Act, it's going to happen anyway, right? But as, we could be playing the catalyst, the leader in this, obviously, because we don't know any of municipalities, and clearly, we're speaking all the same language, all the same concerns, we're saying the same thing, that we don't like it, and so, is there any traction, or is there any feeling amongst, you know, colleagues or administration on acting on something like this? I mean, it's public safety, I mean, I wouldn't, you know, it's different.
If we did not amend the bill to be in coordination with state law, we would not be able to enforce those provisions of the bill, which are not in coordination with state law regardless. So we believe it's appropriate to amend the ordinance at this point, to reflect current state law, and then to continue to lobby our legislators on this issue. I have told the commissioners I do support identifying this building as part of the court complex because of access that is required, which would allow additional protections in this building, but that doesn't relieve my concerns for other municipal buildings and facilities in the community. But I believe it's appropriate to amend the ordinance to reflect state law at this point.
So what's the timeline on how we're reacting to this? After, let's say, this passes tonight, what's our timeline on our actions, I guess, to lobby, or against the state, or get information out and say, hey, we're not agreeing with this, can we change it?
We have continued through I Act to provide feedback on this, and will continue to do that, and I know that it's, will be, I expect it will be a topic for our legislative committee that we're actually having a conference call on later this week to talk about issues to bring to the legislature for the next session.
All right, thank you. Mayor, if I understand you correctly, and for the sake of the council, what you're recommending is that this body would look at the amended version of thirty-two eleven, so that we would be in compliance with state law, and then any legal redress we would be concerned about, certainly, you would support that and recommend that takes place after the passage of the recommended amendments.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have a question we got in this presentation?
Sure, just one more. How long have we been knowing about this law coming into effect?
When was it passed in the state legislative body?
It was signed, maybe April?
Mayor April.
It was late June. May tenth, the governor signed it in.
Mrs. DeRose, do you have anything else you want to add to your presentation?
I have nothing further to add, other than I share mayor's recommendation that this be passed, to have us conform to the state laws it now leaves.
Thank you. Any council member question about the presentation itself? Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone present wishing to speak in favor of amended version thirty-two eleven, please come to the podium. Anyone in the public? Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone against the amendment, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing none, hearing none. Councilors, hear a motion, please.
Move for favorable recommendation.
Motion is made in proper second to send substitute bill thirty-two eleven to full council favorably. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it, and the motion carries.
Council member?
Yes.
I would like to add to the conversation in terms of, our council attorney has outlined a number of procedures and processes that other cities within the state of Indiana, that they are in discussion, and I would ask that we would, as a council, work very closely with the administration, to really look at how other communities and cities are responding to this state. Really a mandate in terms of Senate Bill two ninety-two. Likewise, I think it's very important that we, through our website and other means, should clearly communicate to the public the actions that have taken place tonight, and impact that will have on our city as well. I would ask that the Health and Public Safety Committee keep informed in terms of the progress that is being made, in terms of looking at the various processes and procedures that we must have in place to ensure that not only our elected officials, but our city employees and our citizens are kept as safe as possible.
Thank you, Ms. White. Thirty-two eleven goes to full council favorably. Mr. Vorti, would you please read substitute bill twenty-seven eleven?
Public hearing on Dell of the common counsel of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the major capital investment project in twenty-eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Vorti. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is. Bill number twenty-seven eleven came to the Personnel and Finance Committee for a hearing this afternoon. At that time, the committee voted to give a bifurcated recommendation, first, as to three parts of the bill, concerning utilities, the Riverwalk, and upgrade on equipment at El Dell. The Personnel and Finance Committee gave a favorable recommendation. As to the St. Joe project, the Personnel and Finance Committee gave a no recommendation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trebman. Is there, we need a motion for the second substitute bill?
Second.
For the motion to the second, to accept the second substitute bill of twenty-seven eleven, all in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Please enter.
Prior to the mayor's presentation, council president Dieter and councilwoman Persson to make a statement on the record, please.
Go ahead.
No, you're number two.
You're done.
I'd just like to make a declaration that I am a graduate of St. Joseph High School in nineteen seventy-four, and on the advice of my attorney, I am able to discuss and vote on this matter this evening.
I would also like to disclose that I am a nineteen seventy-three graduate of St. Joe, and I also had two sons that attended St. Joe and graduated from there. Also, it should be noted that I have filled my conflict of interest forms that are required by the state, and they are on file here in the office, and I want to appreciate the fine research our council attorney has done on this, because I was a little concerned, maybe my conflict went a little deeper, and the reason for is I have a relative that is employed as a secretary at St. Joe High School, has been a Catholic elementary school secretary for a while before that job. To me, that really has no bearing on this issue here. Also, should be noted that years ago, and I think it was seven years, and it could have been almost ten years ago, there was a building fund for Father Bly for the football field, and they reached out to the former football players to contribute to this field. Being a former football player, I contributed to that fund. I'm sure Derek contributed to the AV club fund when they reached out. Probably all stayed all in the AV club, I thought. But, and then when they did a facilities review and decided that they might not build there, I was contacted by Dick Sullivan, who was administering the fund, and I just told him, leave it in escrow, it's my contribution, and hopefully someday, you'll build your field. So with that, I gave those facts to our council attorney. I appreciate the due diligence you did, both on Indiana state law, and a ruling by the Indiana State Supreme Court that involved a fireman, I believe, and.
The US Supreme Court, I was wondering.
Well, yeah, but the first one was in Newcastle, Indiana, with a firefighter off duty, doing some work for the city, and then also, the most important ruling came down in Nevada just last week. So I thank Kathy for that, and based on her recommendation, and we've always gone with that, she feels there is no conflict of interest on my part on voting on this matter tonight.
Is there a quick question for clarity? Does, are you not picking up the kicking tee, not students being a football player?
I think you're fine.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
We're reading it into the record, right? We're not holding a convention of bleep club, and we're going to read it into the record. All right.
Okay, a quick declaration really quick, do I make the same type of declaration? My wife is an alumni of St. Joe High School.
On the record.
All right. Any other things to be read into the record related to this issue? Seeing none, hearing none. The presenter will please state his name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephen Lick, Mayor of the city of South Bend, offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. Appreciate the opportunity to continue discussion on this bill. As was noted in the committee report, there are four components of the bill. Sixty thousand dollars for engineering work to move city utilities, which will be in the right-of-way of the realigned US thirty-one as it comes into the south side of South Bend. Forty thousand dollars for a water pump at El Dell Golf Course. That's needed only if it ever stops raining, but at some point, it probably will. And fifty thousand dollars to repair piers on the Riverwalk over here by the Colfax Bridge. Some of the concrete around those piers is deteriorating, and we want to make sure that that's stabilized. And then, one point two million dollars for site consolidation at the former St. Joseph Hospital site, the future, or current now, St. Joseph High School site. The reason for the second substitute bill is to add language, which the council continued the bill before it could be amended in at the last meeting. That language is this. The site consolidation appropriation of one point two million dollars is subject to a written agreement setting forth of public benefits to the citizens of South Bend, which will be provided, and are intended to be realized by the redevelopment and future use of the site. These public benefits shall include, but shall not be limited to, the use of the outside athletic facilities by the South Bend Community School Corporation, and other public entities on dates when St. Joseph High School does not have a conflicting scheduled event, and access to other limited indoor venues during such times and for such events as mutually agreed, when the school does not have a conflicting scheduled event. All use shall be subject to usual and customary costs of operation of the facility, such as custodial and security expenses. Such written agreement shall be filed with the office of the city clerk. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to bring this before you. I strongly ask for your support for this appropriation. As you know, this is a critical piece of property for our community. When St. Joe Hospital decided to build a new campus, we actually had the risk of this being a large vacant property right in the core of our city for a long time. Had a developer come to us with a project, we most likely could have spent upwards of five, six million dollars to assist private development of this site. We are excited and pleased to have St. Joseph High School make a long-term commitment to the city of South Bend, and to this site, and to invest thirty-five million dollars in private money at this site. Our participation is one point two million dollars, and we are proposing to acquire the Family Dollar Store. We would then transfer to the property to the school in exchange for a public benefit that will be derived, and that public benefit refers to items that are in the amended language, that is, use of the stadium by South Bend High Schools, perhaps by other leagues, Pee-wee leagues, or others using the stadium as well. Potentially, the opportunity to host regional or sectional football games at that stadium here in the city of South Bend. In addition, use of the school facility itself during times when St. Joe High School is not using it, and it's my understanding that the administration there is actively looking to develop ways that the community can participate and use that facility as well. So there is a public benefit and public return for the investment that we are proposing to make. In addition to that, obviously, there is the major benefit of thirty-five million dollar investment on that site, the construction jobs created at that site, and the further benefit to the surrounding area, so that we believe there will be more interest in housing in the neighborhood, an opportunity for more stores in the East Bank and near downtown area to develop in conjunction with that. I know that there has been some question about church and state issues raised. City Attorney Chuck Leonie sent a memo to council members, but I would ask Aladeen DeRose if she would come and speak to the constitutionality issue right now for council members as well.
Thank you, members of the council. Essentially, the mayor has clarified exactly what it is that we're receiving, that is, the public of the city of South Bend, and as long as there is a substantial public benefit to an investment of the sort, the Indiana Supreme Court has found that any other benefit to the school is incidental, and what the city is getting is the recovery of a vacant piece of property right in the middle of nearly the downtown area, substantial site. We're getting the use of the public facilities, of the field facilities, the outdoor facilities, and the indoor facilities for the benefit of the public. The Indiana Supreme Court has recently, as late as two thousand and three, ruled in a case, Embry versus O'Bannon, that even though a public school corporation provided teachers and other kinds of reading materials, computers, that type of aid to a public school, that was incidental to the public benefit of educating the public, and therefore, there was no constitutional violation. In an attorney general's opinion, that your council cites, and some information to you, the furnishing of free buses by a school corporation to children going to private schools was also determined not to be unconstitutional, because the primary benefit was educating the public, the protection and education of children. So the public benefit here is a substantial one, and if that public benefit is substantial, and there is only incidental benefit to the, to the school, as a private school, then it is constitutional, in our opinion.
I would also point out that St. Joe High School has not asked the city for any other participation in this project beyond what we are asking of the council tonight, and we do not anticipate any additional requests from St. Joseph High School for this project. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and we'd be glad to answer any questions, and ask for your favorable support on this bill.
I want to recognize Mr. Oliver Davis first. To our attorney, when you deal with the issue of substantial evidence, substantial use of a facility, did the other cases that you had cited from, did they already have written agreements already prepared, and the other side had already put that together before the whole case? Because my concern on that is, we are just putting together a written proposal, but we don't have any word back from St. Joe High School, is exactly what will be the use of time for the indoor facilities, outdoor facilities. They already have a full schedule, what they utilize their building for, and probably have a lot more, and so, just to say that the public will have access to their indoor and to their facilities, I think could be misnomer, in the sense that we will not necessarily have all of that, based on their full school schedule that they have had over the years, and so, just to say that is almost to say that we have access to like the public parks kind of thing, we can go there anytime we want to, but that is not the case in this situation, and so, therefore, with the other cases that you cited, did the other side have it already complete, their whole itinerary already scheduled and put into place before the action was made?
For the first thing, for the life of the school we have, the city has the ability to use this facility, indoor facilities, outdoor facilities, and athletic. the city has the ability to use this facility, indoor facilities, outdoor facilities, and athletic fields.
So that has been clarified.
If we have, the language that we have in here that has been acceptable to Saint Joseph High School is the language that will be included in any contract that we have with Saint Joseph High School. So it's not an illusory contract. It's a contract that they have committed and will commit it to do for the city and for the city's residents.
But do you think that needs to have somewhat tightening with that? Because of the fact that, I mean, just to utilize their building during their regular school hours after the square? They have a full year. I mean, it's not like they don't already have a schedule in place. So just to put that as the words of writing so we can get around some legal concerns is one thing, but to really put it in actuality where we can really be put into practice is another thing.
We're satisfied with the language that has been worked out through the attorney, through our office, through council's attorney, and through the school corporation's attorney, that this language will be binding, that it will be significant, and that it will continue for the life of the school, which is, could be a hundred or more years.
Will the public have, when that language is put together and finalized, will that be presented to the public? So they will clearly know what the language is, and what kind of usage that they will have, and how will that be disseminated to the public for those kind of issues?
One clarification, a parliamentarian wants to address his point.
With regard to Councilman Davis, to your last question, that is precisely why we asked that the memorandum of understanding be filed with the office of the city clerk, with Mr. Fordy's office, so that there would be transparency with regard to that.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I'm glad you did. Because, but the thing is, we have offered that, but I have not heard where it came back. Because they're part of it, where there is clear understanding from Saint Joe saying, okay, these will be the times you can use it in the summertime, this is the time you can do an ice cream break, this is the time you can use that for four o'clock in the afternoon, this is what you can use the building for. And, I mean, public, will they allow to have certain dances? Will they allow to have certain things? And what kind of things will they have? That is a religious school. And will they really have all public, can you have a public closet over there with a band, rock, and everything else? Is that really public? Or is that really just a normer to say, this is something that the public can use in a private school? Because I clearly know, in many church facilities, you cannot use certain things. And just to say, we're gonna put public things in a church facility and activity is not gonna fly.
We are not proposing that the field is a city park. We are proposing that there will be public use, that is, that there will be scheduled events that will meet with the schedule of Saint Joseph High School, that are public entities using that field, or public members of the public participating in activities at the school. And more of those details will be available in the memorandum of understanding as we move to the transfer of the property. But I don't want anyone to have the impression that anyone can go in at any time and use a classroom, or use the library, or use the field. The public benefit will be for scheduled events and scheduled activities, and create additional space that's available for those types of things that is not available currently.
And the final part I have with this, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the mayor mentioned that we could have used this for, there was a private developer, but we would have put probably five to six million dollars in this. But at the same time, we would have put five to six million dollars in. Would not we have gotten, possibly, since you used that as an example, wouldn't we have got tax dollars to have offset that, that we would have given? So innocence would have been awash?
Most likely, when I anticipated another development, that there may have been a five or six million dollar investment in, I would expect that that would have been taxable property. So yes, there would have been a return on that investment over a period of time.
So in a sense, even though we would have put more into that at that time, yes, we would have gotten tax dollars for this. And so, in a sense, we are losing by putting this one point two million dollars out now because there is no way we can get it back at this time in this economic time.
Thank you.
Mr. Henry Davis, I'll call your hand.
Sure. When you're talking about the subject of the school corporation and the agreement that was made, so we actually had a conversation, or your office had a conversation with the South Bend Community School Corporation, and they're fully aware of the plans that we're trying to make for them. And they are in favor of the usage or being able to use?
They fully under, yes, they understand that the city of South Bend is given this priority for times when the school is not, when it's not letting us.
Okay, so are there, will there be any fees associated with usage of the building or the facilities that will be available to the public?
The normal and customary fees that we would pay even for our own services, and that is security and custodial.
Custodial expenses or security are fees that could be charged for use of the facility, yes.
So, just a thought, a reason, would it be more favorable to use this money to expand or to inject these dollars into the school corporation that clearly hits headline newspapers every single day? And making those resources or those accommodations to the level that these accommodations will be up to? Just an idea, you know, obviously, that's not what's on paper right now. But as an idea, speaking towards what's going on, I would have thought that maybe it would have been some type of understanding that we do have public facilities, meaning our school corporation's facilities, and injecting dollars to produce better accommodations for the public where they already note their welcome at those particular facilities.
As a member of the advisory committee for New Tech High, I expect that there will be requests from the school corporation to assist with facility for that new high school, and expect to, at some point, bring requests to council to consider that. As I've mentioned before, we have assisted the South Bend Community School Corporation on numerous occasions with improvements to their facilities, and are glad to consider that again at their request. And as we have resources to do that, what we are asking tonight is for an investment of a million dollars to support a thirty-five million dollar private investment in our community that I believe is positive for downtown, for the entire community.
Well, I think that, you know, we understand the investment part of it. I think what we're bumping heads at is, where is the, I guess, the real benefit for the community that you're talking about, the public benefit? And so, let me go to my next point. We talked last, a couple of weeks ago about this. Has there been any more conversations about labor unions or local labor has its effects? Or is it going to be implemented at, during the construction of this particular building?
I have not had additional comment on that.
Okay. And just a point of clarification. And this is related, but not totally related, but I'm gonna bring it up. We've been working, or I've been working with two recreational centers in the second district to enhance the accommodations at these two particular facilities. One of which does not have any outdoor lights on their basketball courts. And as we're talking about infrastructure improvements, I would have thought that maybe the sixty thousand dollars that it takes to enhance these two centers, or give one light and give the other one better light, would be a priority versus, you know, what we're doing right now. And I have to speak that because I am the second district shareholder, and those two facilities are in the second district. And so, when we're talking about one point however many dollars are going, million dollars are going to a public, I mean, a private facility, nothing against them, not at all. But when we have these things as our responsibility, where does that, how does that sound when we're talking about prioritizing, you know, a budget and making sure that the accommodations are available to the people who are paying taxes to afford these public facilities that are already here?
I have not had any conversation or communication from you concerning this issue, and we're glad to look at it and bring it forward.
The money has been held up in purchasing.
Pardon?
The money has been held up in purchasing. The money was, is already there, the lights have been defined. Everything has been already located, but the lights still are not there. And so, maybe Mrs. Venater has something.
My name is Greg Zentara, Controller for the city of South Bend. The money's available in the current budget. It's not been held up in purchasing. Engineering is working with the Parks Division staff and working with purchasing in order to determine how is it best that this move forward, given the purchasing laws of the state of Indiana.
It is dark out there, sir.
We're working to get, make sure that there's no violation. In choosing a vendor, we have to make sure there's no violation in how we approach it from the public laws of purchasing in the state of Indiana. There's been a vendor identified, okay? That's Musco Lighting Systems. However, we've got, so there are already existing structures. Engineering just had a meeting the end of last week, and they're working out the details of that. That's the information I can give you right now.
Sure, and thank you. But you, we have, you guys and the administration has five plus lawyers that are on payroll. And it's taken us two summers, because this will be the second summer without lights out there. And the only thing that we can come up with is that we don't know what the really good laws are as the government oversees the purchasing of sixty thousand dollars in lights. That's our best explanation, and that's what we're supposed to carry back over to the West Side?
That's the explanation I can give you at this time. And when I have more information to give you, I will do that.
So why would this be a good idea for me to vote in favor of one point two million dollars that's going to a private facility who is not going to pay back into the tax structure or the tax banks here in South Indiana? When we have children that like to play outside at night or when it's getting dark, and they only have the accommodation of having lights out on their courts? And this is the second summer for it?
We ask you to vote on the merits of the proposal that we've brought before you, and we believe that that warrants a positive vote.
Well, I can just bring up a point. You know, this is the thing of my concern. And this is the thing that I have in the district that I represent, that I was elected to represent. And when you have something that is minute, sixty thousand dollars compared to one point however many million dollars that it is, it doesn't even like, it doesn't compare. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else, a question for the presenter?
Quick question.
Yes, Mr. Chris.
I apologize for being out of the bill at the last meeting, and this might have been covered. Real quick on the, these funds, the one point two is coming out of the EBIT fund, all of it?
That's correct.
And that roughly replenishes at about seven million a year?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, the total investment on Saint Joe's part is thirty-five million, what they're putting in. That does include the cash value of the entire property, not the Family Dollar, but the whole thing with the tearing down. Does it, I mean, that's just their cost, hard cost for the structure?
That's their site development cost for the new school.
Didn't Saint Joe tear the property down, I thought, for them?
Saint Joe Hospital, yes, Saint Joe Hospital demolished the buildings. However, there was some foundation and additional rubble on the site that was an extra cost for the high school. The high school has also acquired a couple of residential properties. The high school will be demolishing this structure when the transfer occurs, if the council appropriates the money.
Especially when you figure in the two property costs that was donated to them and a lot of their demolition costs incurred by the Med Center, the cost is probably more than thirty-five million, maybe a forty million dollar investment.
Others could speak to that better than I can.
Anyone else? You got a question? Mr. Dieter? Negative. Anyone else? Mr. Oliver Davis?
Now, you said there was a private developer that came to you that, to the, to the, off the five to six million dollars?
No, I, no. If a private developer had.
You said word if.
If a private developer had come to us on that site. Before, when the hospital announced that it was going to build a new campus, we began meeting with hospital officials, with neighborhood residents, with the university, with our staff to talk about what could happen at that site. And we were making plans for primarily residential housing development on that site that would have required significant infrastructure to support that residential development going in. We never had a private developer come to us about that site. Then, as we moved on the road, and the opportunity presented itself for Saint Joseph High School to build a new campus at that site, we obviously have had discussions with them, but.
So basically, when you just say, well, if a private developer, that was more if, if they had come, and was necessarily marketed to private developers? And that was basically a discussion more within the schools for that sample, but not necessarily marketed to ours?
As we looked at, as we tried to be prepared for a major institution leaving a large plot of land in the core of our city, we did planning. And so, we did cost analysis of what we thought the city's participation might be if we had the opportunity to have a private developer. But again, no private developer approached us. And of course, it was not our land to sell. We were trying to be proactive and plan so that we wouldn't have a large vacant land, piece of vacant land for many, many years, but.
Thank you.
Alright. Counselmen?
Question?
One thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It brought to my attention, and we've noted this earlier, that we had extended discussion on this issue both in public hearing and previously. And I was going to make a motion that we limit discussion to a half hour for each side.
Okay. The, in case you didn't hear what Mr. LaFontaine was saying, we've had a public hearing a couple of weeks ago. And the proposal is, in the second by Mrs. Fazello, is that we would limit the public hearing pros and cons to a half an hour total. Each side would have a half an hour of total, so half an hour for cons. On each side would have a half an hour. Alright? Anyone wishing to speak? We have a, we have the motion in second. All in favor of that motion to limit both sides, half an hour pro and con, each, half an hour each. So indicate by saying aye.
Aye. What's the minimum and what's the maximum amount of minutes? Did we just set that?
Thirty, thirty.
No, I realize.
You mean for speaker?
Well, no, I mean, is there like a scale? I mean, what might we have in these? Do we just arbitrarily choose a number? Thirty minutes or sixteen minutes? I mean, I'm just asking.
The proposal was a half an hour on each side of the issue. That's the proposal. Half an hour for pros, half an hour for cons. Alright, so all in favor of the motion? We have a motion on the second. All in favor of it, so indicate by saying aye. Aye. Aye, poll. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill, second substitute bill, twenty-seven eleven? Please come to the podium and state your name and address and speak your mind. Anyone in favor?
My name is James Harris. I live at eleven twenty-five South Bend Avenue.
Pardon, Mr. Harris, would you put the mic to you when you can hear it better?
My name is James Harris. I live at eleven twenty-five South Bend Avenue. Distinguished members of the council, I would thank you for the privilege of me speaking tonight. I have lived in the area my entire life. I'm a precinct person and very concerned with the neighborhood. You have a fire in my area. Got Mr. Councilman Buddy Kersey. When I think I was in the fire department, I would show up twelve o'clock, three o'clock in the morning to check it out, to see what was going on. I rise as a proprietor of the oldest Afro-American business in the city. I rise as one who has long advocated fair, unused, unbiased, progressive development and redevelopment of the northeast side. I support twenty-seven eleven because I believe partnership with will enhance the development of the east side race, east race, as well as phase two and three of any street common development, and provide a state of the art facility to partner with the South Bend Community Schools Corporation. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. For the next person, please come and state your name and address.
My name is Susan Lightcap. I live at eighteen thirty-nine North College Street. And I have been a resident of South Bend for forty-three years. My husband and I have always been. Uh, my husband and I have always been very loyal supporters and active participants of South Bend. Um, I am also a member of, um, the Saint Joe faculty and staff for the past thirty years. Um, I would like to note that I'm not Catholic. I've been a very proud member of Saint Joe for those thirty years. Um, I have watched Saint Joe serve generations of students and families in truly remarkable ways. To try to count all of those and make a list would be, um, a very difficult task because our accomplishments have been many, and our contributions to the city have also been Our students choose to come to Saint Joe, and it should be noted that that is a true benefit to the city of South Bend in terms of the taxpayers. Uh, it's probably saved the millions of dollars over the last fifty-eight years for the students who have chosen to come to Saint Joe. Um, I would like to focus on the contribution that our students and families have made directly to the city. I happen to be the moderator of a group called Hope, Helping Other People Endure. For the last sixteen years, um, our food drive alone has generated between twenty-three and twenty-five thousand dollars every November for our food drive to help families in the city who face food insecurity. And that's only one of our activities. We are active throughout the year, and the number of South Bend communities, um, organizations that we help are really countless. We, and that's not to mention the seventeen thousand plus hours that our students devote to community service, to the various organizations in town. I truly believe, in my heart of hearts, that the one point two million dollars that we're asking of the council, um, is totally justified. Saint Joe has been a very good neighbor to South Bend. We have contributed a great deal, and, um, to pay the one point two million dollars to help us with thirty-five plus million dollar investment, not only for a state of the art high school, for our students for generations to come, but also that will build excitement and business opportunities in the city as well. Um, I have to go back to one of my favorite images of throwing a rock into a pond. Um, one point two million dollars may be a rather sizable rock, but it's still a rock in a pond, and it's going to make one splash. But those ripples that will go to the corners of South Bend will be, um, a remarkable, remarkable gift to South Bend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. For the next speaker, please come and state your name and address.
My name's Marty Hirschman. I live at one five two four East Madison Street in South Bend. I also work at Saint Joe as an assistant principal and varsity boys' basketball coach. Uh, I've also grown up in South Bend, lived on Wilbur Street, and like I said, now I live on Madison. And to be quite honest, I'm very excited about this project as a member of the Saint Joe community, but equally excited as a member of the South Bend community. Had the privilege of serving in Catholic education in cities such as Charlotte, North Carolina, Portland, Oregon, and Cincinnati, Ohio, and I've seen firsthand the struggles Catholic schools have had to remain open in urban settings. And so I know firsthand how rare it is for a Catholic school to want to relocate in an urban setting versus moving outside of city limits. We have also seen that struggle here, I think firsthand, with other organizations choosing to leave our downtown area. The term "public benefit" has come up tonight in this meeting, which is a very fair question to be raised. Uh, I have two topics to speak on in regards to public benefit. The first one comes with, uh, with some trust and some hope, in that if we do build new here, that it will spawn more development, as some of our previous speakers have touched on, and help the area, uh, the immediate area grow and attract new businesses, mainly due to the fact that we're talking about nine hundred students and their families coming to our school on a daily basis, additional families coming on evenings when there are various activities such as sporting competitions, and what that will then lead to in terms of a return in tax dollars by other businesses possibly locating in this area. Uh, that does, though, come with some trust and hope, but I firmly believe as a resident of South Bend, that is what is best for us in that area. The second, um, example I have comes from public benefit that's currently going on between Saint Joe and the community. I was at basketball camp all day today for our elementary students. Uh, at the basketball camp itself, we've got about a hundred and forty-five kids that are coming through this week. For all of our camps total, we have well over seven hundred elementary students coming through our building. And this serves students from all over, and this has been going on for some time. It's students from, yes, some of our local Catholic schools, but also students from our public elementary schools. We open our doors to a wonderful program called Camps for Champs, uh, in the name of Mr. Polczynski, a longtime South Bend administrator in the public, public school system. Today I spoke and worked with kids from Marshall on the south side, from Jackson on the south side, from Edison, from Clay Middle, and they come and they use our building, and they interact with us, and we interact with them, and, uh, have a, have a great partnership. So when it comes down to the, the topic of public benefit, there already is public benefit between Saint Joe and, uh, and South Bend. This is an opportunity to increase that public benefit, and I hope that you vote in favor of this so that that partnership can become even stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschman. Next speaker, please come and state your name and address.
Honorable council members, my name's Robert Urbanski, uh, two one five three three Golden Maple Court, South Bend. I'm here to speak on behalf of Saint Joe High School for several reasons. The first is, as a former businessman here and, and owner of some development land here, uh, South Bend needs to move forward. South Bend needs to progress with new businesses, new growth. Here we have a local business, a local school, private though it may be, willing to take on some vacant land. Uh, if we look around the, the former Studebaker lands, uh, sitting idle, doing nothing, we're going to develop this land. This land is going to go from a, from a hospital that loaded ambulances and moved out of South Bend a couple of years ago to a thriving high school in a, in a year. Uh, that's admirable for this community. It's admirable that the community did it itself without outside help or outside people coming in. What we need to continue to do, uh, if we, if this was a foreign business, if I was developing downtown some kind of business and came and asked for, for, on a thirty-five million dollar project for five or six million, it would happen. I've seen it happen before in a community. We want it to happen. We want development to happen. And, and this is a, but a small investment in a thirty-five million dollar project, or maybe even larger, Mr. Kersey, that's because of the, the land value. This project is probably more like forty million. I'm on the building committee for, for the new high school. Never was there a discussion, even though the land, there's land owned north of the city by the school, never was there discussion to, to pull out the school and go to the north and sit in the county somewhere. They, they wanted to come downtown. They welcomed the chance. They welcomed the, the ability to come into that northeast neighborhood. But just as we put money into the west side of South Bend, into the Crock Center, and you, the council, the city of South Bend, put money in that, in that private operation, that's what we're asking you to do here. It's good for our community. It's good for it to go forward. Mr. Henry Davis, I own two properties in downtown South Bend that house two restaurants. Those owners are happy to see a development come, that they'll be adults and at a, a sporting event, that after the sporting event want to go downtown and spend some money. They will spend money downtown. They will help downtown become a more lively place to live. I for one, I believe in this community, and I for one am tired of reading articles in our, in our voice of the people, by people from Osceola and Granger and Mitchell Rock telling, trying to tell you, our council, what we should do in South Bend. I trust your decision. You people work hard. I thank you for what you do, and I hope you support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urbanski. For the next speaker, please come and speak your name and address.
My name is Tim Mayer. I'm privileged to serve on the school board for Saint Joseph High School. I work at Barnes and Thornburg. My offices are at one hundred North Michigan in South Bend, and a lot of what I wanted to say has been covered adequately by our other speakers today, so I'm going to kind of scoot through this in bullet points. The council is rightly concerned about what is, what benefits will be conferred on the city by this project, and I think it's important to note that day one, what will be, what will be added to this city is thirty-five million dollars worth of available jobs for tradesmen, for suppliers, for people in the construction industry that badly need that work. Starting the day we open our school, the things that will be available to, uh, this city are the things that this school has historically provided. I, I had a note about the fact that we would provide taxpayers, solid citizens, and maybe even some leaders. I wrote that note before I realized that three of you sitting here on the council today have connections to Saint Joe High School. This school has a proven track record of giving back to this community. You, you asked the question, Mr. Oliver Davis, about what do we have to, to tell us exactly what dates in the future our facilities would be made available? I don't know whether you know this or not, but we have a track record of the past at least twenty to thirty years of working cooperatively with the South Bend Community Schools and other people who have facilities that we currently do not, so that we could schedule our sports teams and events around the facilities that other people have that we don't. We're well versed in that exercise, and we fully intend to continue to work cooperatively now that we'll be one of the groups that does have facilities that other people need or want to use. We know how to do that, and as a solid citizen in our community, Saint Joe High School will be able to meet those needs and does take seriously its, its obligation to address those needs for people who aren't in particular members of our school community. We will be able to anchor a neighborhood that just lost a hundred and sixty-year tenant in, in the shortest possible turnaround time. We were doing our dirt work before the hospital was done doing theirs. That we won't have lost a day, we won't have lost a minute, really, of that property going to waste or being at risk for not being used or for becoming an eyesore in the midst of our community. We have, um, the, the question that was asked about why we can do this and not fund sixty thousand dollars worth of lights is a good question. My understanding is that the funds that are available for this project are dedicated funds that are made for economic development. It come out of a different pool, and pulling, and pulling the plug on this project will not create sixty thousand dollars worth of space in a budget for your lights because these, these funds are already dedicated. It only makes good sense to use these to create the opportunity for us to build this school. If you wanted to talk about the ratios here, taking your sixty thousand dollar light project, if, if your proposition was like our proposition, what you'd be asking the city for would be somewhat less than five hundred dollars, and you'd show up with the other fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to get your light project accomplished. We're here with thirty-five million dollars that people who know this school, believe in this school, love this school, and want to see this school succeed have pulled out of their own pockets and put on the table. And all we're asking for is a little help. Saint Joe High has been and will continue to be a good member of this community. I have six children who all, one of whom has gone through, and the other five will go through this. It's my abiding hope that they have a good place to come back to and wish to remain in South Bend as good citizens, and that you help them realize that goal of mine.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill twenty-seven eleven? Saying not hearing, anyone wishing to speak against, uh, passage of twenty-seven eleven? Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Greg Bukowski. I live at two zero one five five Roosevelt Road, and, uh, I am against this. I've been researching a little bit the state constitution. The basic duties of a city is to provide basic infrastructure, public safety, basic infrastructure such as roads, sewer sidewalks, so on and so forth, provide for public safety with fire and police protection and public health such as sanitary sewers and, uh, safe drinking water, and provide in partnership with state public schools. I don't see anywhere in the state constitution where it is the duty of any city to provide, to be a clearinghouse for private developers, be they a educational institution or a business, to the scale that this city has done, uh, and is planning to do with the Saint Joe project. The duties of a city in this process is to facilitate that development by expediting the permanent process, the vetting process, and the inspections so the project can get done. It doesn't mean that they have to buy property, tear it down at an exorbitantly high price, like one point two million for this, like the one and a half million they got wrapped up in the Gates property, and I don't know how much in some of these other properties around the city that are still vacant, and they're going to, in the process, take a property, a business going business off of the tax rolls. I think it could be done in a better way. Maybe they could work a deal with the diocese from Saint Joe High School, and the city could work a deal to where the city, the business could move to the side. You could build a building a heck of a lot cheaper and pave the parking lot than what we're going to pay to raise that building and give it to the high school and lose that tax base. I think also the jobs that would be created, they're definitely going to be temporary jobs. They're going to go away as soon as this project is complete. The area right now is pretty much landlocked around where this high school is going to set, so if any new development's going to come, there's going to be more wheeling and dealing with the realtors and developers to buy properties to develop, retail, and what have you, that you want to put in there. I think it's also reasonable to ask, on the amendment that was put to twenty-seven eleven, to ask for specific benefits versus cost analysis. We know it's going to cost one point two million. What specific benefits are we going to get from this? The residents of the city as a whole, as well as perhaps the county? The language that's in this amendment to me seems a little ambiguous at this time, and I'm thinking that probably when they put the deal together to finalize it, it's still going to be pretty ambiguous. I want to remind you, when you take this property off of the rolls, I misspoke at the last meeting, but there's going to be over eighty parcels being removed from the tax rolls when that US thirty-one project comes online in Gilmer Park. Most of those are commercial. They ain't coming back, at least not the majority of them within the city limits of South Bend, and that's a big chunk of change we're going to lose, and I don't think we can lose anymore. I also would like to point out that Memorial Hospital, who recently had taken over Madison Center so that this city could have a mental health facility, could use about that same amount of money, about one million dollars, to bring that facility up to standards to where they could utilize the other two-thirds, to bring it up to code and standard so they could fully and safely treat mental patients within this community. Right now, that facility is two-thirds unused, and that, to me, would be a much bigger benefit to the community than a private Catholic high school that the diocese is going to build anyway. So I would think it would be in the city's best interest to think this thing through a little better before you approve one point two million, because we have a finite amount of resources. We wouldn't have nine point one million dollars of surplus had this and the last administration come crying out loud that they're going to shut down police and fire protection every time they got in a little bind when the state said you're going to be limited on your property taxes. I feel that basically mismanagement over the years and exploiting the taxpayers is why we have this surplus right now. Had they not gotten all these extra taxes that they'd asked for over the years, and they went for the max on just about all of them, we wouldn't have a surplus. And had they done their due diligence, and had they maintained the economic development over the years, and not watched employer after employer leave the city with good-paying jobs, we would be sitting on a surplus with some of the lowest taxes in the state. I only have to ask you to look eighty miles away and compare Fort Wayne to here. We're comparable size, and they're doing a lot better financially than we are. So I would respectfully ask you to vote no on this project, and let's renegotiate the price on this family dollar thing and get it down to a bearable level before they buy it, maybe work a deal to move it to the corner of a lot, because they don't need that whole lot to build that high school. But where the family dollar is right now possibly would interfere with their athletic field, but if they put it over on the corner, they could still have everything, and maybe we could get by for half price. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please come and state your name and address.
My name is Tony Trink. I live at one thirty-nine Camden Street. First of all, I'd like to echo the, uh, concern. First of all, I'd like to echo the concerns of Councilman Oliver Davis about the availability of the, and the conflict in scheduling. I thought, you know, I think that they are just trying to sell us a bill of, just a load to sell us, you know, just to sell it. They got to come up with some reason for this thing. So they're using that as a, a reason to try and get you guys to vote yes. If I, if I really wanted something, and I, I had saved a, a long time for it and planned to buy this thing, and by the time I went to get it, found out it was another buck and a half, I'd probably go ahead and pay the dollar and a half more and buy it anyway. So I think that this project will go on regardless whether we throw our money at them or not. Yeah, they are good, uh, uh, good for the community, and they are spending money here, and they're not moving out, and that's all good and well, but I don't think at this point that that one point two million is going to, going to run them off. And I think our money, the citizens' money, should be spent for the citizens. When we, when we can't even come up with three hundred thousand dollars for an, an animal care and control facility, we got that thing on the table, something that was approved last year and now is on the table because of a, a three hundred thousand dollar difference. I just can't see spending one point two million to tear down a building and hand over the property to give these people, you know, to let these people... If they want to build their school, then let them buy the property themselves. That's how I feel about it. I think that the one point two million is, uh, the city money that should be spent on a city project such as the animal care and control facility. That, to me, is much more important at this point to the city, because those people on Olive Street got a dump. It, it is a dump, and it's a travesty. That's, that's about all. I, I just, I just hope you vote against this thing and spend the money otherwise. If these funds are designated, then I suggest we redesignate and get that animal care and control facility built.
Thank you, sir. With the next speaker, please come and state your name and address.
My name is Brandon Ricky. I live at, uh, in the fourth district, fourth district of South Bend at twenty-two eighteen Rotten Drive, South, uh, South Bend. I'm also a student at IUSB. I just want to say first off that I'm not opposed at all to Saint Joe building a high school in South Bend. However, I believe that the idea to take, to use one point two million dollars of taxpayer money, I know there's been some talk up here that it, oh, it comes from this fund or that fund, well, that all has to come from somewhere. It all comes from taxpayers. To use one point two million dollars of taxpayer money to buy this property and then hand it over to a religious institution that does not pay taxes back to the city, I believe, with all due respect, is quite frankly a stupid idea. Um, as, as far as the proposed benefits that this, that this would have, we already have other facilities in South Bend like school field that football teams can use to, uh, to have a facility to use. Um, I don't see this as bringing any, as being any kind of a, of a benefit to the city. Uh, I don't think it'll, it, it doesn't really help the city economically, and I think it would be who, uh, be who of all of you to vote against this, given that this is an election year, because I can assure you that nobody who votes, votes for this will get my vote. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please come and state your name and address.
My name is Glanda Ray Hernandez. I live at seven oh two East South Street, South Bend. This project and many others all came up because suddenly we had this pool of extra funds, and as others have referred to, that we were told this was going to be for salaries for police and fire. Now, for some reason, we didn't need it for that. However, I know, in my opinion, it's more important that it go for salaries, whether it's police and fire or other people who've been laid off in the city. And I can speak from my own experience that at our human rights department for two years, we have not had a secretary. And I think restoring jobs of people who had to be laid off because of the French coming from the state, that those should be the first priorities before some of these projects, and particularly this one. I too have concerns about the, uh, benefits being used as, as a reason for, um, investing one point two million. I just don't think they justify that much money. Using the argument that we have helped the public schools by giving them land or whatever is a totally different ball of wax, because those are also tax-supported units, not private religious school. Also using the crock as a comparison, I think, is not fair, because in my viewpoint, it was pushed through with little or public knowledge or input. To me, it has become like a stealthy precedent that now can be used to justify this kind of spending. So I ask you to vote no.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please come, state your name and address.
My name is Reverend Henry L. Davis, senior, two fifteen North Sheridan Streets, off of Indiana. The speakers that spoke for this spoke with a passion for the things that they want. Some of the passion and the things that they say was disingenuous, and I found condescending. So I'm going to speak with passion. I went to Oliver School. They took Oliver School down. I went to Linden. Linden is tore down. I went to Central High School. Central is tore down. So where's my legacy? We had someone say something about lights compared to a million dollars. That's disingenuous. We have suffered in this city on the short end. For someone to come and say they want a million dollars to go with thirty-five million dollars compared to sixty thousand dollars, where's the reasoning? On the west side, we doesn't even have a swimming pool. Think about it. What do our children have? We can play with raccoons, we can play with possums from all the development that's been happened around the city that created the doughnut in which they were talking about. That's the legacy that we have. Just look about yourselves. See what is really going on. Don't close your eyes to this matter. We have no legacy. Everything that is built up, and you wonder why people react the way that they act, look at their environment. Yes, sixty thousand dollars will make a big difference, just like that million dollars will make a big difference in an area where it is really needed. Another part of this thing is that when they build this facility, who's going to support it but the dollars? Are they going to take the money from the school, South Bend's Community School Corporation, and start having the sectionals and the regionals there? Are we going to support that venue also? Are we going to start playing all our football games at this new facility and spending our money there? And while our facilities steadily go down, you need to really think about what the public option is going to be here, because we're going to end up the loser as we always do. Wake up. Vote against this thing.
Thank you, Reverend Davis. With the next speaker, please come and state your name and address.
Oh, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name... Is that better? Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Diana Shalagi. I reside at seven zero nine Cushing Street in South Bend, four six six one six. I have been a resident of South Bend for approximately ten years. I would like to echo the sentiments of previous speakers. Uh, I am fully in agreement with them, um, and in particular with Councilman Henry Davis's, uh, qualms about the whole thing and that, you know, we have children in this community who don't have all the necessary items that they need to grow up healthy and happy. I would also like to, uh, very much comment that I resent whatever fund this, these monies come out of as a South Bend taxpayer. I resent, uh, these monies being used for a private, uh, school, um, and this also sets a dangerous precedent. What, what is there to, uh, uh, why couldn't a Baptist school say, well, we want to come and build in South Bend a school, but we're lacking, you know, a couple million dollars of funds, or a Lutheran school, or whatever? This sets a very dangerous precedent for the future, and I ask you to consider that in your deliberations, and I ask you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The final speaker, please come and state his name and address.
My name is Sal Gershoffer. I live at twenty-one oh one Prairie Avenue. I didn't hear the people in favor of this project say family dollar. That must be a bad word for them. I went to a Catholic school myself, uh, Our Lady of Hungary, and I'm kind of, I'm in favor of Saint Joe building a school for thirty-five million dollars. Now, if they raised thirty-five million, what's another one point two million dollars to them? It's like, it should be a drop in the bucket. And then if the mayor said, well, City of South Bend is going to use Saint Joe's facilities, well, who's going to pay the help, the time that the South Bend is going to use those facilities? The custodians, who pays them? Is Saint Joe going to pay them, or the taxpayers going to pay the custodians? Good question. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Licky, you have a five minutes for rebuttal, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Again, my name is Steve Licky, mayor of the City of South Bend, offices on the fourteenth To, just a brief review again on the local option income taxes. The public safety tax is being used one hundred percent for police and fire salaries, as we said it would. The other local income tax that was enacted, property tax replacement, is providing property tax relief for every tax-paying parcel in Saint Joseph County. Uh, and then the third, uh, local income tax that was adopted, two tenths of a percent for economic development income tax. And again, my, um, proposal to the council, uh, my position has been that those dollars should be used for economic development initiatives. I believe that this is a positive economic development initiative for the City of South Bend. I believe it's a great leverage to invest one point two million dollars to get thirty-five million dollars in private investment that will create construction jobs. Yes, they are temporary jobs, but nevertheless, good jobs for the period of time that they are working. Uh, in fact, we had people at the CROCK Center saying that had we not had that project going on, they'd have been on unemployment for an extended period of time. Uh, so it's a, is a positive investment for our community. Uh, it's, it's a positive investment in terms of the excitement and the energy and the activity that will, uh, come to this site, uh, not only with the students and their families coming every day, but with events and activities that happen there. Uh, events and activities both for Saint Joseph High School, but for other schools in this, uh, community as well, and for other public events that will occur at this site because of the transaction, uh, that agreement by the high school to make the facilities available for public use, uh, as part of the transaction here. Uh, it will generate additional, uh, interest and investment in the northeast neighborhood, uh, also in the East Bank area. I believe that all of these things, uh, will happen. It takes a site that, um, would be a huge vacant hole in our near downtown area and brings, uh, uh, an excellent institution into the core of downtown. We are excited to have that investment by Saint Joseph High School, believe that it's good for our community, uh, and, and good for the long term as well. And so I ask for your favorable vote on this, uh, on this bill tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Licky. I wanted to get somebody else first if I can. Anyone have a question? Mr. Oliver Davis?
Um, Mr. Mayor, um, we've talked about the CROCK Center several times and, um, how monies were utilized from city dollars to help the CROCK Center. Um, in that, um, negotiations with the CROCK Center, there was minority hiring that the CROCK Center has been, um, given awards for in the city, um, that they have, especially with the minority hiring, that they were a part of awards that they received for that, plus they have dealt with local hiring issues to make sure that they're local hiring. It is my understanding that none of these stipulations have been put towards Saint Joe, um, in terms of anything dealing with minority hiring contracts with their, um, the thirty-five million dollars that we were talking about, and, uh, when it comes to local hiring of our, uh, people. Um, so therefore, when it comes down to this matter of dealing with African oranges, the CROCK Center made a firm commitment. They came to our meeting several times. They worked with the economic development, and they also, um, really wanted to not only just say we're going to work with the community and trust us based on our track record, we're going to put it into our contracts, and we're going to do this, and they have done it, and they have followed through, and we have used, utilized them as a model in this community. Saint Joe High School has not done that at all, and, um, you know, I believe in our last meeting, there was no requirements on that. Is there any reason why, since there was going to be city dollars and we were going to, um, put any of these monies toward that, and you all made the negotiations, you know, pretty much before we had contact with this issue? Um, is there any reason why that wasn't even considered and as a part of the negotiations too, since we were going to be using tax dollars?
Uh, we did not, uh, require that of, of every, uh, project that we participate in, and, uh, we did not, uh, make that a stipulation here at this point.
Is there a reason why that cannot be a part of the stipulation if this passes?
Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of a reason for that.
Is there a reason why it cannot be?
I'm not aware of a reason, no.
What would it take for it to be a part of that, then? Because we have, I mean, you yourself have gone out to really, um, and many of the city leaders have gone out there to push, um, the policies of the CROCK Center, and we have given them great, um, um, awards, so then we turn around and give the next big project a thirty-five million dollars and do the complete opposite?
Mayor Licky, by me, I understand his question. I, I don't know that you do. Will you elaborate on the fact that the city did not put an obligation on the CROCK Center?
That's correct.
I, I think you need to address that, that kind of...
It was a voluntary, um, uh, program that the CROCK Center offered and has obviously implemented well.
We asked, and I realize that, but recognizing the special exceptions and special issues that they had to deal with, they wanted to not only say that, oh, we do food centers and we do all these other things like many other places do, and many other churches do, they also wanted to say, we're going to be a part of this community, and we're going to put this down into monies, and we're going to hire local people, and we're going to hire minority hiring here too. And, um, that wasn't even a consideration. And I have great concerns with that also, along with the family dollar, along with everything else, to see why, especially in light of the bill that, um, was passed here just a few weeks ago, uh, concerning the efforts of our city to do more minority hiring.
And I agree with Mr. Davis. I wanted to draw clear lines of demarcation of that bill, which is, uh, uh, ten eighty-one dash eleven, codified. That strictly, that, that bill is related to, uh, money that's being contracted for the City of South Bend. It has nothing to do with any private contract. That's why I wanted to be clear.
Oh, I was clear with that, but once you put one point two million dollars, everything opens up. Once you start putting, mixing monies with everything else, the whole thing changes.
Uh, Mr. Dita, I think, Ms. White, you want to, you have a question?
No, not yet.
Ms. Dita, first.
Sure, but in regards to that, I don't believe the CROCK Center made any concessions at all for the use of the facilities on a public, uh, venues and that Saint Joe has done, so I, last time I heard, everything that... So, I, last time I heard, everything that, uh, was going to go on with the CROCK Center, people had to pay to get in there and paid to use the facilities and there, I don't think there was agreement such as Saint Joe has made on this bill.
I disagree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Dieter. Mr. Davis, uh, Mrs. Fazella, you have a question?
Uh, no, I have something I wanted to say.
Okay, Mrs. Fazella.
Um, I live right down the street from this development and, um, when Saint Joe Med Center decided to leave, they did what they said. They, um, they leveled, they leveled the whole area and it was the biggest hole and wasted space you've ever seen and seemed like the biggest. And, uh, a group, a committee got together, I can't say exactly what they did, I was not a member, but, uh, they got together and made decisions about what would best fit in that area. And I know they talked about housing and decided that that was not what it was. And, uh, anyway, there, the discussion finally led, when they heard that Saint Joe High School might be available for it, uh, to Saint Joe High School. And it was chosen and it will be a beautiful place, uh, yeah, on the East Bank. And, uh, we now, um, my district goes over to Notre Dame and we have a partnership with Notre Dame more in recent years than before, but we have a lovely partnership with Notre Dame. Uh, certainly, I don't always agree with them and, and if it's appropriate, I tell them so, but, uh, still, they, the students do a lot for us, the university does a lot for us in our neighborhoods and for the whole city. And I believe in partnerships with the entities that are in South Bend, especially the large ones. And I believe that Saint Joe High School will be the same kind of thing. We will be partners because we were part of the project. If we're not part of the project, then we're not going to be partners or probably not. And, um, uh, this, this will be good in the East Ray and in the whole city. It will lead to more business, it will lead to more housing, it will lead to more, more, um, uh, people eating and drinking and, and doing things, buying things in our, in our neighborhood and, and a large area around it, the whole East Bank. And I just think it's a situation where a lot will be given to us. Money brought in, partnerships as far as the use of the buildings, um, a lovely entity in the East Bank, um, this, it will, the partnership will be a wonderful thing for all of us and it was the best use of the building because there was a lot of study, oh, of the area, I'm sorry, uh, because there was a big study on that. And, uh, I just think it'll be wonderful for all of us and our fairly small, uh, giving for that situation will, will become, will be paid back many times.
Thank you, Mrs. Fazella. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Davis?
Really quick, I, um, I want to say, cause I'm waiting, I, I, um, really, really think that, uh, the energy that the high school, uh, will bring to that area will be great. I think it will look good. I think it will just be a great face lift. Not against the project, just against the spinning hordes of the City of South Bend. And that's what, uh, I was elected to do, to make sure that we are part of a checks and balance system, to not negotiate, but make sure there's the five lines of what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. Um, I, 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 you know, listen to, um, all the speakers and I thank you all for coming out and, and, uh, using your time, your, your personal time to express whether you report or whether you're against it. That's what we call democracy. That's what America was built upon. However, I, I, I find it very, very, uh, difficult to believe that, you know, when we begin, begin to talk about kids, children, students who live in the City of South Bend, that yours is more important than mine's. I have no, um, way of telling someone, whether they're in this God district, that my kids are more important than your kids. They're still our kids, one way or the other, and we're going to have to deal with them one way or the other. I had opportunity to, uh, visit some youth prisons here recently and it just wasn't black kids or white kids in there, there were kids in there. And so if we continue down the street as Americans, as Christians, as some of our Christians, we're going to create more problems for ourselves than we're going to create, uh, good. And what I mean by that is that if I can pull out and say something about sixty thousand dollars versus one point two, me as a resident, uh, whether I swore against it, I wouldn't even touch that. I'd have let that alone because on my end, I'm thinking that you're telling me your kids are more important than my kids. And so this is where we come into the public war of who is more dominant than the other. I think that we need to re- revisit while rehearing and what we're trying to do. You know, uh, I have, have had heard no offer since I brought the sixty thousand dollars up, that we're going to work on it, that we will help you get those delights, none of this such. And I put that out there just to hear what was going to be said. I've been dealing with the life issue going on probably three years, not two years. And so just to hear what people are going to say. And, and, and then it, it's, it's heart wrenching to believe that we can just say, oh, those kids, they'll be fine, you know, they'll get it when they, hopefully when they get it, but we are going to get ours for ours right now. Come on, America, what are we doing here? I'm done.
Mr. Davis? Anyone else who can speak, uh, regarding twenty-seven eleven?
Okay, see, now, I'd like to make a motion for a, uh, favorable recommendation for second substitute twenty-seven eleven.
Okay.
Motion is made and properly second.
Point of order, I want to make sure, are we voting for which project?
Let me, uh, I'll get on ready. I'll get probably on ready. We had a motion and a second for the passage of, uh, twenty-seven eleven.
No, for the favorable.
Substitute, recommend, uh, favorable recommendation to full council on substitute bill twenty-seven eleven. You've heard the motion and the second. Is there any unreadiness?
Yes.
Ms. White, please.
Okay, I want to make sure, are we voting on the total bill or how? Okay, then.
The total bill.
The total bill. I thought we had separated, at least that was a recommendation.
That was, that was an advisory recommendation from the Personal Finance Committee alone.
Did we take action on that and I have advisory recommendation?
No, there was no motion made on that.
Could you share what the advisory recommendation was?
Yes, uh, the advisory recommendation was to recommend favorably, um, the US Project Utility Relocation of sixty thousand dollars to East Bay River, launch repair of fifty thousand dollars on the Elbow Bumpers pump, water pump equipment at forty thousand and I, uh, without recommendation on the one point two for the site consolidation.
All right, clarification on that? If, what I'm asking is a clarification on the motion? You've heard the motion and the second, all in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Boyd, call it over, please.
Uh, Mr. Henry Davis. Mr. LaFunt.
Aye.
Mrs. Fazella.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Nay.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Nay.
Mr. Curson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Nay.
President Dieter.
Aye.
There are five ayes and four nays.
Uh, twenty-seven, substitute bill twenty-seven eleven to go to full council's favor. Mr. Boyd, would you please read bill thirty-seven eleven? Thank you. Pardon? Quick break.
Motion, motion for a five minute adjournment.
Second.
Five.
Reset.
Reset.
We, uh, motion is made and properly second to adjourn for ten minutes.
Reset.
Research, research.
Reset.
We're going to adjourn the reset.
Reset.
I'll stay my calm. I'm tired. I didn't, I don't. I didn't make the motion.
It's not over. It's not over. Hey, but we didn't, it's not over, it didn't, it's not on the late score, it comes at three points and there, it could all go down.
What are you doing? Tree seed. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Stop fighting. Thank you.
Yeah, I just.
Who's in fourth? Who's in the fourth? I don't know about that, I mean, I just jumped in, there wasn't a three. Yeah, Tim? Uh, I'm good. I'm staying. You know, you know you're going to lose, but you are. That's easy. Yeah, you can't change that. Good luck, good luck, because it'll lose too.
That's, huh? It's a good investment, but worth a thunder for economic development.
Yeah. Oh, I'm still fine. You know, they want to do this.
What's wrong? I can't even get like them for any fire nation where it had ten thousand dollars to be managed under five vehicles.
I just, I'm beat, because, uh, I left. There is not a time to find your kids to check that day.
I, I agree.
No, no, you took it all, you took it all.
I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like.
I know, Kathy, you're going to have to, to jail.
If there has been, if there has been, uh, a, 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 they will need some funding, you know, send that. Yeah. 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 I'm sorry? Did I? Yeah. I didn't mean to tell you that. Or knows my own. Um, really, I wanted to go to the, yeah, and I wanted to work, I have other stuff, but, you know, everybody else is online, just, just line up and start making your requests because there's lots of money and it's easy enough. Yes, sir. I got that too. But he was six thousand dollars. Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. I, 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 and that's just the way she is, is that, yeah. Ah, she just, she just quiet, that's her. Um. Um. I'm going to ask, what was, I'm going to go back to, he, he was. Well, did, did they all leave? They've done, I mean, nothing's changed. Um. And, you know, I got to ask too, remind me, the, the, for the lights, what was the issue about the lights, the hook style? They just, they just, the public works just hangs their feet on anything they don't want to do. Remind, I'm putting it on the table because of my committee, because we got to push that. Those kids need to be safe. They just, uh, if, 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 if they don't, if, if they feel like they've been pressured. But those kids need to be safe. Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. And that, that Musco lighting deal. I mean, just think about for two years. Has it been two years? Yes. Do you remember? Mm-hmm. Sorry. There, there is. Do you remember? I think the answer is. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I remember. I mean, so we got a public thing for each of the kids, we got a light. There's no reason for that and I'm going to, when it gets back there, I want to put under, um, uh, get up there, what do they call it? Uncle Jim, do you order, uh, some pizzas or something for us? Uh, under, uh, I want to put up there to the, to my committee, sixty thousand, please for our committee. Those kids should not be, um, that, that's wrong. So I'm going to put it on there. All of our, when we ask that, um, issue about the light. I bet, I bet it was Sunday in San Antonio. That's what I was saying. I'm like, I'm like. Yeah. You know why? I know. But it's not, it's not, it's not suitable. Okay. Thank you. I got a whole list of, or in the comments, I'm not going to make them, they stand. Don't, don't make them. Well, I got them on red. Make them. It's pretty similar to what I made last night. Get away from me. Get away from me, Republican. Thank you.
And you need to go back. I'm disappointed with you. I'm, I'm disappointed too, okay? But you need, but you need to go and go back to behind the, behind the porch and we can talk some other time. But you don't come up here, uh, and sort of, you know, you got a problem with any of them, there's a way to go about doing that. It's a big, the place to do it. You come back, uh, bring the committee to hold back the order, please.
Thirty-seven.
Mr. Boyd, would you read bill thirty-seven eleven?
Yes, sir. Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the City of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers for various departments within the City of South Bend, Indiana for the year twenty-eleven.
Is there a committee report?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, this matter came up in front of the Personal Finance Committee today. Um, at that meeting, the committee voted to send this to the council with favorable recommendation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, would the presenter please state his name and address?
Uh, my name is Greg Zentara, Controller for the City of South Bend, um, offices on the twelfth floor of this building. Uh, bill thirty-seven eleven is an ordinance of the common council for budget transfers of various departments within the, uh, current civil city budget of the City of South Bend. Uh, unforeseen circumstances have developed since the initial adoption of the existing budgets, which were approved by common council spending ordinances, one hundred forty-five dash ten and one hundred forty-six dash ten, which necessitate the increase and reduction of various appropriations within departments of the general fund and other funds of the City of South Bend during fiscal twenty-eleven. Uh, the increases and reductions included herewith in this bill are expenditure neutral for the twenty-eleven budget with increases and reductions netting to a zero dollar appropriation. Uh, I would be happy to answer, answer any questions that council members would have.
Compliment of the question, other presenter?
Basically.
Mr. Davis and Mr. Davis.
Um, basically, when you go put everything together, it washes out together, there's no additional items that we have to add to the budget.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Your motion, please?
Um, public hearings.
Public hearings, I'm going to move fast. You are. Public hearings, uh, anyone wishing to speak in favor of thirty-seven eleven, would you please come to the podium and state your name and address? Anyone against it, please come to the podium. Now, is there a motion, please?
Uh, move to bring thirty-seven eleven to the full council with a favorable report.
Okay.
Motion is made and properly second to send thirty-seven eleven, favorably to the full council, all in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes having the motion carried. Mr. Boyd, would you please read bill thirty-eight eleven?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the City of South Bend, Indiana for budget transferring two million nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars from the rainy day fund, number one oh two, to the Hall of Fame Debt Service Fund, three thirteen, four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Fire Pension Fund, seven oh one, one million two hundred thousand dollars. Police Pension Fund, seven oh two, one million two hundred thousand dollars. hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, fire pension fund, seven oh one, one million two hundred thousand dollars, police pension fund, seven oh two, one million two hundred thousand dollars, and the unemployment compensation fund, seven thirteen, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, within the city of South Bend.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, is there a committee report?
Yes, this matter came for the, uh, personal and finance committee this afternoon, um, after having public hearing, the, uh, committee voted to send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
All right, sir, is there, presenter, would you please state your name and address again?
Uh, my, my name is Greg Zentara, Controller of the city of South Bend, with offices on the twelfth floor of this building. Uh, Bill thirty eight eleven, uh, is an ordinance of the common council, uh, transferring monies from the rainy day fund to support temporary, uh, cash flow issues in certain balances, as read in the, um, uh, bill title, uh, within certain city funds. Due to possible delays and receipt of certain property tax revenue, state of Indiana, distributions of cigarette tax revenue from the state and county, and police and fire pension relief reimbursements from the state of Indiana, it has become necessary to temporarily transfer monies, uh, from various funds within the city to these depleted funds to meet current operational expenses. In the event of the property tax distribution, cigarette tax distribution, and police and fire pension relief reimbursements are received prior to June thirtieth, twenty eleven, and sufficient to negate the deficit position, the temporary transfer of funds approved by this ordinance will be unnecessary and will not be actioned. Uh, should such transfer of temporary funds be required, the transfers will be returned to the transferring fund at the earliest position upon, uh, receipt of sufficient distribution to the funds in question. Uh, this concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver Davis first.
You stated in the meeting today that there's a good chance that this will be sent to you as of earliest tomorrow?
The, uh, it is, uh, not necessary, with, with this bill, it's not necessary to transfer monies for the, uh, uh, for the support of the police and fire, fire pension funds, as we receive distributions from the state, reimbursing money spent in twenty ten, uh, late last week. Um, I am told today, I haven't checked the bank account to see, but I'm told today that the county made its, uh, its tax distribution, um, and that, uh, those funds are now available. Uh, if that's the case, uh, it will not be required to, uh, to transfer, uh, the Hall of Fame, uh, monies, uh, or funds, uh, in order to, uh, uh, take care of the Hall of Fame deficit. However, I've not looked at that information.
You haven't seen it, but basically, you've been told that so probably by this time tomorrow, you would know that.
Right, and, uh, as, uh, was requested in the, in the, in the bill, in my comments, uh, we'll only transfer those monies that, uh, uh, that will be required, if it's not required, we won't transfer monies.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
No, uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to disclose, though, that, uh, my late father was a member of the South Bend Fire Department, thus, my mother is on a widow's pension, and pursuant to state law, I'd just like to disclose that, and I don't really get anything from my mother, except grief, that my hair doesn't look as good as their ears, on occasion, on birthday party.
We gotta call your mother to act to the list.
Statement of disclosure.
Captain, should I receive a pension?
But not this one, but not this.
No, that won't give it to me.
All right, is there any other questions, other presenter? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of thirty eight eleven, please come to the podium and state your name and address? Anyone present wishing to speak against it, same option. Seeing, not hearing, not conference. What's your favor?
Revelation.
Second.
Motion is made to send thirty eight eleven to full council favorably, all in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes having the motion carried. Mr. Ward, would you please re-substitute Bill thirty one eleven?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving block party application fee. Make a motion to hear the substitute version.
Second.
For the motion and second to hear the substitute bill, the amended version of substitute Bill thirty one eleven, all in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes having the motion carried.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
By coincidence, a gentleman stopped by at dinner, at the, uh, recess, and asked, Aladeen specifically, would you speak directly into the microphone, and they said they couldn't hear you quite.
However, we need a committee report first.
Thank you.
Committee report.
Thank you, uh, this was the last matter to come before the personal finance committee this afternoon, um, and after public hearing, the, uh, committee voted to send this to the full council with favorable recommendations.
Would the presenter please state her name and address?
Uh, thank you, Aladeen DeRoe, City of South Bend, legal department, with offices on the fourth floor of the county city building, I am an attorney, uh, and I first want to credit, uh, uh, Councilmember Pozzello for the language of the substitute bill, which I think has, uh, has resolved some of the problems that, uh, arose during our first discussion of this, but essentially, uh, Bill, substitute Bill thirty one eleven, uh, comes to you because of an influx or a, uh, greater, an increase in the, uh, number of, um, special event permits that Public Works has been processing the last year, in fact, the, uh, percentage, uh, between the, um, applications in two thousand nine and two thousand ten jumped by about, uh, twenty-five to thirty percent, of which forty percent, a total of forty percent, were for events that were probably more like private events, uh, for which, uh, homeowners had requested that the, that the streets be blocked. The cost to the city for any, uh, for every, uh, block party where a closure of the public right-of-way is required is about a hundred sixty-five dollars, so substitute Bill thirty one eleven, uh, asks the public to pick up a portion of that charge, and it does so in two, and under a twofold system, first is for residential block parties, which are defined in the ordinance, and, uh, for residential block parties, uh, the cost is fifty dollars for the applicant, and for non-residential block parties, the cost, uh, is, is a hundred twenty-five dollars. Non-residential block parties are defined by those that are sponsored by, uh, uh, businesses, uh, including nonprofits on a non-residential street, and with this, um, with substitute Bill thirty one eleven, uh, in, approved by you, um, we think that it's a fair and reasonable allocation of the cost, uh, for this to the public, and it will encourage more people to use the public parks and, and other facilities for their, uh, private parties. We ask that you give favorable consideration to substitute Bill thirty one eleven.
Council, is there a question, other presenter?
Sure, real quick, uh, the fee that's gonna be paid out for this, it has to go through proper bidding, through the Board of Public Works, right?
Correct.
Uh, is it refundable if they find out or think that this is not a good idea, or, or just costs, do they get the fifty dollars back, is it non-refundable or is it refundable?
I, I've not, I, it would be, that would be the Public Works Board decision, I, I believe, um, we didn't.
Because we never had this, you know, fee, listen to it, and that's why, I, I just thought about that, you know, if I'm paying fifty dollars for an application, and it's not approved, do I get my fifty dollars back, or does it stay?
And I think that's something the Board of, Board of Works could address, and there may be, there is a, there is a cost just to do the application itself, the major cost, however, is in the placement of the cones on the street, but it's, the total cost is a hundred sixty-five dollars for that entire process, of which, a, a large portion of it is for the, the, um, review process that Public Works has to do.
I'm aware of that, but I'm still at the refundable or non-refundable fee.
That would be up to.
I mean, we understand that there's a cost, that's why we're instituting fees. I'm just asking you, after my application goes through, and it's not approved, will I get my fifty dollars back, or do I have the understanding, when I get the piece of paper, which is the application that I'm giving, that I know I'm not gonna get this money back, if not approved, I just think that.
Can Mr. Gilat possibly give some insight on this, please?
If not, I mean, it's just something to think about, I, I just thought about that. Good question, good point.
I had not given that point, uh, a lot of thought, Gary Gilat, Public Works Director, offices thirteenth floor, had not given that a lot of thought, I think we should go to cost of service principles in deciding how to answer that, so that portion of the fee that is associated with review and approval process would not be refundable, that portion that would be associated with going in the field and placing cones or traffic control or, uh, any of our field activities would be refundable because we didn't incur that cost, so we will, at the board of works level, follow cost of service principles in making that decision.
Well, that's fine, just make sure it's on the application, that when they get it, you know, I may not get my, I'm not gonna get my fifty dollars back or my hundred, if not approved.
Truly noted, truly noted, we'll explain that.
Yeah.
All right, good question, anyone else?
There is a block party, um, spreadsheet that shows how the fee is allocated, so that was in your original pack, and then, the, the costs are there, the main cost, a hundred seventeen dollars out of the one sixty-five, is for the cones, everything else is the application.
Aladeen, I am not disputing that, just business is business, and if I'm gonna pay for a service, I'm gonna expect it to be delivered, that's it, thank you.
All right, uh, council, any questions? No, anyone present wishing to speak in favor of Bill, substitute Bill thirty one eleven, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Anyone present wishing to speak against it, the same option, please, please come to the podium. You got a question?
Um, I, I have something that I wanted to mention, so that it's in the minute, just that, small thing, um, the, uh, NRC, uh, gives grants to people who are having block parties, if they apply, and I believe, I'm pretty sure, that the amount goes up to two hundred dollars, so it could be used to cover this fifty dollar fee for a residential, uh, block party.
As a reimbursement?
Yes. Well, no, it would be just up to the neighborhood to decide if they wanted to use a possible two hundred dollars for that.
The money that you give in the NRC is a reimbursement from your application that you give to them, per the, the, the function that you're holding, so you have to show a receipt to say, I spent X amount of dollars, up to two hundred, in order to get that money back, you don't get that money upfront. Been through it before.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're, uh, in the public hearing portion, with anyone wishing to speak against the bill, please come to the podium. Seeing, not hearing, not, council, is there a motion?
Move for favorable pass, the second.
For the motion and the, uh, second for favorable passage of substitute bill.
Favorable recommendation.
Recommendation for, uh, the substitute bill of, uh, uh, thirty one, thirty one eleven, all in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes having the motion carried. Move to resolve, the move from the committee as a whole.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Full council is now in session, Mr. Ward, third reading of thirty two eleven.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter thirteen, article ten of the South Bend Municipal Code Concerning Firearms.
Move for the passage of.
So move.
Second.
Our favor.
Aye.
Any opposition? No, Dr. Varner.
Motion to approve as amended, thirty two, motions, yeah, pass thirty two eleven as amended.
Mr. Ward. Mr. Henry Davis. Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pozzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner. Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Curset.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President Dieter. Eight ayes, one nay.
Thirty seven eleven. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the major capital investment projects, twenty eleven.
Motion to deny.
Do we need a motion to amend, first?
Yeah.
As it was in the committee.
So move.
Second.
Then a motion to deny. We have a motion and a second, to hear the amended version, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposition. Yeah, a motion to deny.
Second.
Mr. Ward. Uh, Mr. LaFountain.
Nay.
Mrs. Pozzello.
Nay.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Curset.
Nay.
Councilmember Rouse.
Nay.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Nay.
Five nays, four ayes.
Move for the passage of Bill twenty seven eleven.
Mr. Ward. Okay, Mrs. Pozzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Nay.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Nay.
Mr. Curset.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse. Councilmember White.
Nay.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Uh, President Dieter.
Aye.
Five ayes. Thirty seven eleven.
Uh, third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the year twenty eleven.
Move for the passage of thirty seven eleven.
Second.
Mr. Ward, roll. Uh, Mrs., uh, Pozzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Curset.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thirty eight eleven.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transferring, two million nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars from the rainy day fund, number one oh two, to the Hall of Fame Debt Service Fund, three thirteen, four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, fire pension fund, seven oh one, one million two hundred thousand dollars, police pension fund, seven oh two, one million two hundred thousand dollars, and the unemployment compensation fund, seven thirteen, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, within the city of South Bend.
Move for the patch, passage of thirty eight eleven.
Second.
Mr. Ward. Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Curset.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pozzello.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thirty one eleven, please.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving block party applications fee.
A motion to hear the amended version.
So move.
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor.
Aye.
And the opposition, no. Now, may I have a motion for the passage of the amended thirty one eleven?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Ward. Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Curset.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pozzello.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
I would have voted.
Oh.
But you need another.
Ah, Dr. Varner. Uh, President Dieter.
Aye.
That'd be, uh, nine ayes, the way I count it.
Ten, really.
That's a decision to resolution, Mr. Ward, eleven thirty, please.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at ten nineteen Talbot Avenue and ten twenty-three Talbot Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one seven.
You have a committee report.
Yes, sir, you, Mr., uh, President, uh, zoning and action committee.
Dieter.
Zoning and action committee met this afternoon, sends for eleven thirty, to the council with no recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
President Dieter, council members, Chuck Bilo, South Bend Building Department, offices located at one twenty-five South Lafayette, uh, at the April sixth meeting of the area Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, this petition to seek a special exception for a two-family dwelling in an SF two, single-family dwelling district, uh, was heard and comes to you this evening with an unfavorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir, your presenter.
Evening, council members, Frank Argosino, one twenty West LaSalle, represent Mr. Caswell Boomka on this property, and I think we've addressed the issues before, this is the situation of a private investment, uh, by a private developer in the city, the private developer who's cleaned up several properties, uh, that he's bought, um, he's not had any violations that he's been charged with, or that he's been, uh, even convicted of in, in this situation, although there seems to be a lot of allegations flying about, um, for what he's done or not done, uh, but I ask you to focus on, again, that this is a private investment in property, and I ask you to support private investment to improve a neighborhood, this neighborhood, um, what's presented to you as part of the materials, or the, the houses, again, with the three hundred foot radius of this property, these are mostly rental houses in this neighborhood, um, it's zoned, single-family, and to elaborate on what Councilmember White was, I think, trying to bring up earlier, and, and regarding, is this a zoning issue, well, y- you have two homes now, which are single-family, uh, those, you're essentially joining those two homes together. When you join those two homes together, I mean, you're still gonna have the same zoning on this area, uh, with the same exceptions for any grandfather in that, that may or may not apply to that area. Mr. Boomka's asking to join them, uh, which is, makes, as an effect, an duplex of these two homes, for the purpose that he feels it's the highest and best use for the property, that'll derive the most profit. This is something that will bring tax dollars to South Bend, because we'll spend money on construction, which will increase the assessment of the property, and will increase the tax revenue dollars that go into it, further as, as long as this is an income-producing property, that'll be more money that goes into the ceded, that's collected at the state level, and comes back to the city again for more economic development. We ask you to support that for this purpose, I ask you not to. that for this purpose. I ask you not to think of this as, again, against students. Um, I think that's come up again, 'cause, uh, again, as Councilmember White had brought up, if this is single-family now, it's still gonna be single-family. Voting for this doesn't mean that you're voting for any multifamily. Doesn't mean that you're voting for having more than two persons in any one dwelling in this. Voting for this is, is to accommodate the space that the renters would like for this type of area. You're accommodating the renters. You're inviting people to come back into the community, to be in downtown South Bend, to be in this area, this near northeast neighborhood. And that's what I ask you to vote for. If there's any other questions, we'd like to handle them. Uh, Councilman Davis?
Tony Argostino, um, oftentimes we have heard from the Neighborhood Association, but for those neighbors who are right next to this kind of a facility, that are homes that's gonna be built, what has been your response? 'Cause people who live right next to the homes that are being proposed, to me, have greater value in that issue, uh, when I make those kind of decisions. How do, how are they saying to you that they're gonna be affected by this? Because they live right next to this.
We, we had previously submitted a petition signed by those neighbors and support this. We also have, several of those neighbors are here tonight and would speak in favor, that live in this neighborhood and would, and live next to it and will speak to it.
I'd like to hear from them, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the question?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to have some clarity in the issue that I was asking in terms of the zoning, but for issue looking at this being single, that will not become a duplex. So what is the actual room and, uh, statue in terms of what is being proposed?
Is that question directed to? Okay. If the question's directed to me, I, I, I think what the question came up, and I don't think it was, we didn't properly develop it there at, at the, at the level of the, just the committee there. But if this is a single-family, this is just, it's an exception to make it a duplex, but each dwelling of this duplex is still subject to the same, the same rules a- as the other zoned areas. Now, there, there may be an issue where the, it tries to raise it for a grandfathering, uh, of this if it was for a, a multifamily, but I mean, to do that, as you passed at the previous council hearing, he's gonna have to make an application, and then that's gonna have to be considered, whether it was grandfathered or wasn't grandfathered, but that's not the issue before the council tonight. The issue before the council tonight is, can he put in a duplex? And are you, you still gonna have each dwelling in that duplex? Each of those still be single families, so there's not more than two unrelated persons allowed in each side of that duplex?
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven thirty? Just, uh, step up to the microphone. We need your name and address. We would ask that everybody that does wanna speak, uh, in favor, just, uh, for time's sake, stand up there.
Hello. Tony Trinka, one thirty-nine Camden Street. Uh, I was at the, uh, uh, first committee meeting when this guy, uh, made his case, and, uh, this guy is a private investor, and he does develop a lot of, uh, properties, and, uh, while I don't think we should throw one point two million at him, I do think we should approve this for him because all he's trying to do is move these two, uh, close the space up between the two dwellings, as opposed to pushing out to the outer limits of the, uh, property line. So he's wanting to use the, the space between the two properties to, uh, enlarge these two properties, as opposed to squeezing the neighbors. And for, and I can see where he'd wanna do it by joining the two houses together. He's closing up that gap instead of squeezing the outside neighbors. And so I think, uh, he ought to be given, uh, favorable consideration on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Robert Foltz, and I live at ten oh eight Talbot Street, and, uh, I'm here to speak in favor of Mr. Bumaka's, uh, annexation of the, uh, two houses there. Um, he's done quite a bit, uh, in the neighborhood. I've been there five years now, and, uh, the work that he's doing in the neighborhood is commendable. Um, he's done a lot to implement some of the people that are directly in the neighborhood into some of the projects and things that he has going on. And I speak in favor of it because I'm a neighbor, and I've dealt with it now almost five years, and I haven't had any problems that I couldn't discuss with Mr. Bumaka. Uh, you thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you.
Which is more in favor?
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Lenore Murray. I stay at ten oh eight Talbot. I live next door to one of his properties, and since the five years that I have been there, he have brung the neighborhood up because I can remember when I first got there, all I seen was, excuse me, was crackheads, drunks, and everything. And it's not, you know, safe for you to sit out on, at that time, safe to sit out on your porch, but now since he don't know bought property and brung it up, it's more safer for you to sit out on your porch. My grandkids can come and sit, play in the yard, don't have to worry about, uh, the drunk people or crackheads walking around, or stealing anything. And I like, you know, what he has done for the neighborhood. He is not asking y'all for no money. He's supplying his own money to build. See, that's one thing that since I've been sitting here, listening to all the motions and everything that been going through, even though I didn't get up to say anything on it, just like the Saint Joe thing where you have to give taxpayer money to build the Saint Joe school. Half went, most of them went for it, you know, voted for it, and some was against it, but, uh, voting for it, went over it. But he's using his own money to upraise the house, you know, to make the community look better over there in the neighborhood that we live at. It would be kinda wrong for y'all to just, you sit there and then think about it and then say, no, y'all voting against it. You would never know how the neighborhood was unless you've been living there, and is experiencing what we went through before he started bringing it up, where it's more safer for a person to sit and be proud to live on that street. That is all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl. I was born. I stay at thirteen ten Howard Street, and Howard and Talbot is right there, so I, my house actually can look at the houses and what he's doing there. And I'm here because I'm in agreement to what he's doing. He's bringing up our area. That's where I have to live. I'm homeowner there, so I want good things to come there. Please vote in favor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition?
Councilman Dieter and members of the city council, my name is Marguerite Taylor. I live at seven fourteen East Corby. Um, I'm a long-term resident of the northeast neighborhood, and I, but today I come to you as, uh, the vice president of the Northeast Neighborhood Council, who actually voted against this project. We, um, I belong to the, a group called the N N R O, the Northeast Neighborhood Revitalization Organization, and we're looking at the big picture. There are absolutely no duplexes on Talbot. Mi- Mr. Bumaka may be bringing your neighborhood up, but there are long-term plans for that neighborhood. Um, Burns, George Anne, and Bowie is the triangle across the street. That's well into progress. We are looking, the N N R O is now looking at Howard, Talbot, and Bowie to do some long-range things there. I understand that it was, uh, a terrible neighborhood. I can remember when a policeman was shot and killed on a porch on Talbot. However, the neighborhood is better. The entire neighborhood is better, and I can't say that Mr. Bumaka made the neighborhood better, 'cause he really did. I know crackheads. I know drunks. I know people that live on Talbot, that live on Stockton Avenue. I've been here my whole life. I know a lot of stuff. There are no duplexes on Talbot. What he said to me today was, at, at the three-thirty meeting, he, he talked about Madison Center and the house on, on, uh, I live on the corner of Turnock and Corby, and he started talking about the Madison Center House on Turnock. It is a group resident home, and it was zoned as a group resident home. It wasn't built in an a-residential neighborhood and, and built as a a-residential house where you could have eight people live in it. It was built as a group residence, abiding by all the laws of the city of South Bend. He also, I think I'm having a real problem, 'cause I heard him call Aunt Pizzella a liar. I can't ever, ever remember someone doing that. Ever. And it just disturbed me to no end to hear him. She said something that, of a conversation that Mr. Bumaka had with Mrs. Pizzella, and he called her a liar. I was going, I almost fell off the floor. But that's neither here nor there. I really ask that you vote against this. It does, it bring, I don't care if he brings, uh, money to the neighborhood. He can bring money to the neighborhood and do those two houses individually by making the individual house better. He doesn't have to put them together. One's a two-story house, one's a one-and-a-half story. Doesn't make sense. If you look at the property, it makes absolutely no sense what he's planning to do. Please vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Patty Walsh. My address is three fifteen Walsh Street, and I am a resident of the northeast neighborhood. Um, my part of the neighborhood has also come up over the past many years as the neighborhood continues to see improvement. Because this particular petition doesn't support the single-family housing character that our neighborhood has worked so hard to preserve, I am asking the council not to, uh, approve this petition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm William Berry. I live at four oh two East Polk Hagan. Uh, I'm here to speak against this, primarily because it seems to run against the efforts of the Northeast Neighborhood Council and the Northeast Neighborhood Revitalization Organization, which has been trying to re- redevelop, uh, the north, the northeast part of, uh, of the city. I think they've been doing a fairly good job of it. Uh, this structure, as I understand it, very easily can be converted into group housing, which is something, as you well know, uh, those two organizations have opposed. Uh, the efforts of Heritage Foundation to put in more single-family housing in the area is, it also seems to run opposed to that. So I'm asking you to vote against it, simply because it doesn't seem to follow the direction that has been trying to be developed by the organizations that are working hard in the northeast neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Norine Dean Moran, seven sixteen West Colfax. I am not in this immediate neighborhood. I am in a very, um, immediately west of downtown, central city neighborhood, which has many of the same problems. I also ask you to vote against this. I, I'm puzzled by, um, laws which say that only two unrelated persons can live in single-family zoning, but even in multifamily, you can't have hundreds of people in a unit. Multifamily means there can be several units. Several state laws recently have said that, um, duplex, things built as duplexes still must not be duplexes if they've been vacated for a year or lost their grandfathering. We have enormous numbers of things. At the last meeting, Mr. Agostino talked about being against students. I'm not against students at all. I like them a lot. I teach them. But if you wanna live in houses of ten, twelve, twenty people, you get a flat house, you see if you can get it there, or you live in dormitories. If you wanna live, as the students often say, as regular people, you live in apartments, units, or houses of no more than two unrelated, um, people. Um, many years ago, when our neighborhood was fighting a similar thing with the Catholic Worker, I asked one of the council members how many of then Kramer's Houses had ever asked for a special exception, because he owned six hundred approximately. He sold most of them to, um, Campus Apartments out of Philadelphia, which operates throughout the country, and says, "We're the only city without an ordinance against this type of stuff in terms of landlord tenant." But aside from that, the point is, I was told no exceptions had ever been asked for. The administration didn't wanna handle it. We have laws. I ask you, as a neighborhood that struggles to allow lots of diversity, we have hundreds of apartments that are multifamily. We have several others that are non-pa. We have people who live in duplexes, and we have a very small number of single-family. The object of this is not to have single-family. The object is to obey the law and to also have this. I, at the last meeting, one of you quoted, um, the advertisement for Mr. Bumaka as six, um, five or six, I believe, um, bedrooms in each one. I know from the students, they're each paying five and six hundred a month. That's an enormous greed. I am fine with, um, personal investment. The personal investment in this case is operating on special, um, desperate people. Students aren't really desperate, but they pay that money for it. I live on the West Colfax where we have a house, apartments, that we were told no more than two months ago were all perfectly up to code, and now, of course, there's a thing to vacate them, and people were out, because we had six fires in two weeks on West Colfax there. Again, that's not this neighborhood, but I think all of our neighborhoods in the city must obey the laws, which you have already interpreted from the state and so forth to uphold. I ask you to please vote against this for the benefit of all of us who live in the city. We don't have to get people to come. We're right here, and I think you would hope we did not leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? President, you need a short rebuttal?
Again, I think what the opponents to this focused upon was, it seemed to be they don't want more than two unrelated persons living in these, but I think, again, the same zoning rules, the same rules that no more than two unrelated persons can live in each side are going to apply to each side of this duplex. Uh, we're asking for a special exception to join the two properties, because the expansion of the properties would carry them across the property lines. It seems the highest and best use by Mr. Bumaka for the property, and I think as a private investor, that, that should be a choice, the private investor, what aesthetically or what makes the best use of the property, all worth keeping within the law, and, and I think he will keep it within the law with, with what the council will choose.
All right, thank you, sir. And back to the council, we have a recommendation here.
Uh, before we vote, I'd just like to say again, as chairman of the zoning and annexation committee, again, I think it's a very, very bad public policy that we would allow an SF-two, single-family neighborhood to create the duplex in that area. I notice, I appreciate the residents coming, speaking, and what Mr. Bumaka's done. I do know, looking at this with the list of the homeowners, several of these people are rentals in that area and stuff, uh, the problems we've had. If Notre Dame does build this extra dorm and it pulls more students back, we've seen with Kramer Properties, they're sold off absentee landlords, because Mr. Bumaka's probably not going to own this forever. It is bad public policy to create a duplex in a single-family zone. This, you ought to, this take from a month ago, we had a petition on Hot Camp House Street to do the same thing, create a multifamily, uh, special exception over there. Fortunately, the area plan commission gave it an unfavorable recommendation, and the owner, who's out of, uh, uh, somewhere else in, uh, Long Beach, Indiana, who has a corporation with properties, pulled it from the agenda, so we didn't have to deal with it. Why would we, when the area plan commission gives this an unfavorable recommendation, a unanimous unfavorable recommendation? Why would we allow that to be created over the neighborhood? We've been told by Mark Lyons that they could have applied for variance of the border to make the one house individually a little bit bigger, if that, uh, living room is so tiny, and put like an addition on it. That would be acceptable. That is much more acceptable. This is extreme action by us. It's not good for our neighborhoods. We wouldn't do it in our neighborhood next to our homes. Why should we do it there in this neighborhood with the concerns of the residents in it? I think we should vote this down.
All right, President Dieter. Yes, sir.
Well, um, yeah, a quick question. I, I'm a bit, like, duplex, what's the problem with duplexes? I mean, do they bring on some element of crime? Do they, you know, offer, I mean, I don't understand the problem with the duplex. Who, who ever can answer that? Uh, Tony Argostino, maybe, please? Is there like, like a written rule that... Is there like, like a written rule that duplexes bring in crime, or breed crime, or does a lot of, or do a lot of bad things happen, or adversely affect the neighborhood when a duplex is present?
Well, I, I'm not aware that there has any been any study to that effect, that the duplexes increase any crime, or, or something that's going to devalue a neighborhood. Uh, but I would like to make something in response to Mr. Kersitz's comments about...
Hold on, hold on. Let's, let's just...
Yeah, one more. Another thing was, um, as the market is right now, uh, throughout America, people are renting everywhere. They're not buying homes, and the reason why is because they don't know what the property value's going to turn into a year from now, two years from now, five years from now, if they're going to be upside down on their mortgage or not. They're also renting because banks are not lending money because of the home values that are there. So, renting right now is probably the best option for most people when they're trying to, uh, uh, acquire a new living space. So, I, I don't necessarily think renting is a bad deal. I wish I was probably renting. We're like thirty thousand dollars side down on our mortgage at this point, so, uh...
Can I answer the law?
No, I'm, I'm just civilized out there, you know? So, I think renting, you know, must, necessarily is not a bad thing. I think probably is a good economical choice right now. Uh, I just, you know, I'm having a, a tough time right now trying to figure out what is so wrong with the duplex. I, I, I just think that is my, where I'm stuck at. I, I don't know what's wrong with the duplex. What's the issue? I mean, you guys, he's obviously paying taxes. He's going to be paying more taxes because of the enhancement to the area. We just gave away a lot of money that we're going to have to re-capture somewhere else. I, I, it's not going to be one point two million, but it's going to be a help to regaining some of that money. I just don't understand what the problem is with the duplex. I don't. And if somebody could help me out, if it breeds crime...
Can I answer that?
Yeah, sure.
You have a question, answer me.
Yeah, sure, please.
I, I would like to address towards that, as my degree in college was, I had urban planning classes, being a SPIA grad in grad school and stuff, and from thirty-two years on the fire department, stability's to your neighborhoods comes from homeownership. And I'll tell you what, if I had to go on a percentage of the trash properties I've been in, are usually rental properties. That doesn't mean all rental properties are bad, the landlords, but I'll tell you what, most landlords don't care. Now, if you've created a duplex next to you, what have you guaranteed? That that's going to be a rental property for the rest of your time? Your home you own, your castle, would you want a duplex created right next to it?
What's wrong with the rental properties, what I'm getting at? There are people that probably stay next to you or to you that probably are renting.
Right now, I have a great guy living next to me. He rents. He's moving. He's moving to another. Now I have to worry about what kind of a person I'm going to get in there. Is he going to be a great neighbor? And he just happens to be an African-American, and he's the best neighbor I've ever had. But what I'm talking about, Henry, it doesn't have anything... Rental properties in a single-family...
Where are you going with that African-American deal?
I thought you were going to accuse me of, of...
You're accusing me of it!
Okay, why not? Henry, single-family neighborhoods, putting a multifamily zoning in it, or putting a duplex in the middle of a single-family neighborhood, is not a good idea. If you want to rent an apartment, go to an apartment complex.
Hey, man. Hey, it's good.
I...
Hey, I'm good on it.
Good.
How I'm going on, so, I'm African-American.
Well, I think the reason, uh, I'll just make a statement, when it was implied, when you said that the people that were around the homes were renters, and it, I understand they're homeowners, and it...
From the people in the crowd, it did come across that, um, some of the people who were in support of this were renters. But I will say, from the votes on top, I agree that you have said, um, whether you're renters or not, you have, that whole street has been built up. I mean, that hap, the, the street tower was a famous street for all of us because of the, um, killing of the police officer a few years ago, and I'm going to thank you for what you have done to fix up that street, whether or not you get credit or not, but whoever takes the time to do it. So, I'd like to make a motion that this bill comes to us...
I still would like to see it.
Favor. I would like that. Okay.
Um, the people in the Northeast Neighborhood have, for years, tried to make their neighborhood mostly, uh, family-owned, single-family. And, uh, we haven't always succeeded, and, and to be honest, lately it's gotten worse because, uh, whether there are students living in a house, or, um, and how many students is very, very difficult to prove, and in fact, seems to me sometimes almost impossible. And so, if, uh, if there's a rental that has students in it, they're, they may be within the law. Uh, there may be no more than two students there, or if it's a duplex, four students. But, it, many times that is not so, and, and, uh, I'm sure Mr. Willow could tell me that proving it is next to impossible, that, what the numbers are. And, uh, uh, a duplex is not a single-family home, as, uh, as Mr. Kersitz explained. And we would like to have single-family homes, and we would like to have families living in them whenever possible. Um, certainly, I've said many times, I have nothing against students. Every, every, uh, student I've met who, who, uh, hadn't been drinking or anything, uh, I, I have liked. You know, they're just a good bunch of people. But, um, they don't make neighbors. I mean, because they're there for forty years or less, and to be honest, when I was in college, I didn't have any interest at all in the people who lived there as full-time residents. I was interested in school life and my peers at that age. And they don't, for that reason, uh, they often don't make the best neighbors, they don't go back and forth, they're not, they're, it's just, that's not a family. And, uh, we've worked hard, and a duplex just has more students in it than, than a, than a single family. And, uh, I don't know what Mr. Bumbaka's plans are after he makes this a duplex, if he does, um, but his past has been, uh, renting to students. And so, I take it for granted, uh, on the internet, as I understand it, uh, you've advertised the two properties you now own on that site as, as having a certain number of bedrooms. And when we read those sites and we read those numbers, we take it for granted that you mean that's how many students could live there. And these are on sites that have student rentals. And the, the sites showing those two homes show more than two students in each one, or more than two bedrooms in each one. And, uh, so, I, I don't have a, you know, I, I, I don't feel strongly about it only being two unrelated people after you've made it a duplex, because of, it hasn't been that way in the past, that's all. And, uh, I, I won't vote for a duplex in that neighborhood, and I certainly won't vote for a duplex, which I'm quite sure from past experience, will be for students.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to make the motion for the passage of bill eleven thirty.
Adoption.
Adoption. Second. She Wardy.
Is there a second?
Yeah, by the, President Deere. Mr. Kersitz?
Nay.
Councilmember Rose?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Nay.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain?
Nay.
Mrs. Pizzella?
Nay.
Dr. Varner?
Nay.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
President Deere?
Aye.
Six nays, three ayes. All right. Thank you. Let's proceed to first reading. Can I have a motion to strike thirty-nine eleven?
No, no, no. We have to finish this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
No, no, before, continue.
The motion to continue eleven, four to the number two, seven eleven.
Can't we, this is, can't we have a, a new motion on this? It's defeated. Oh, it's defeated, and that makes it automatic, so we don't have to vote again. Okay, thank you.
Um, motion to continue eleven forty-four to seven eleven.
Plus notice, uh, to the petitioner from the court's office of the meeting, and that it's sent back to the zoning and annexation.
I believe it was written notice and sent back to them.
Correct.
Certified with...
No.
It'd have to be certified on this, America. Mr. Written, are you a motion on the second for that? All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. Can I get a motion to strike thirty-nine eleven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Now, can I get a motion to suspend rules for first reading of bills forty-eleven and forty-one eleven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those in opposition?
Forty and forty-one.
Forty, uh, seventy-one, nine... Just like at the racetrack, if you could. Uh, forty-eleven. An ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating one million, two hundred thousand dollars for the capital investment in Potawatomi Conservatories in twenty-eleven.
Thank God.
Yeah, tell them more.
Motion first. It's good.
Motion sent these for second, third reading, a public hearing on July eleventh, twenty-eleven, sent to the, uh...
Personal finance.
Personal finance committee.
And a motion, we have a second by...
Second.
Huh? All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. Forty-one eleven, please. An ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating one million dollars for the capital investment in Miracle Park in twenty-eleven.
Motion to set, uh, for second, third reading, a public hearing on July eleventh, twenty-eleven, sent to the, uh...
Personal finance.
Personal finance committee.
And a motion, we have a second by...
Second.
Huh? All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. Forty-one eleven, please. An ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating one million dollars for the capital investment in Miracle Park in twenty-eleven.
Motion to set, uh, for second, third reading, a public hearing on July eleventh, twenty-eleven, sent to the personal finance committee. That would be forty-one.
And a second by Tom LaFountain?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition?
Nay.
We have one, nay. Okay. Under unfinished business, can I have a motion to send bill ten-eleven to zoning and annexation for eight-twenty-two?
Come on.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. Can I have a motion to send bill twenty-two-eleven and twenty-nine-eleven to zoning and annexation for seven eleven?
Come on. Second.
Motion to second, all in favor? All right. And the opposition? Now, we have a report from Councilmember Henry Davis.
Thank you, President Deere. Um, that doesn't work anymore. Uh, thank you, President Deere. Uh, really quick, 'cause I, I'm sure everybody is a bit, you know, fatigued right now from today all day. Uh, recently, I was back in, on June second, third, fourth, and fifth, I had opportunity to go to, uh, Washington DC with the group, the network that I'm a part of, which I happen to be the state director for, for, uh, young elected officials. We are funded and backed by People for an American Way, which is a progressive network, nonprofit, based out of DC, Washington DC. During the course of this, uh, meeting, this national meeting that we do every year, we had opportunity to be, uh, briefed by, uh, David Fluff, who was, uh, President Obama's top advisor. Well, uh, during the time that he was there speaking with the group, he, uh, noticed that this group was, uh, extends from Alaska all the way down to Florida, under the age of thirty-five, uh, whether your school board, or county government, city government, state, or even national, that this group is quite influential. Well, during the course of this talk, he thought that it would be a good idea that we, we'll be invited to the White House. Now, previous years, we've had the opportunity to go up to the White House, excuse me, to the Eisenhower Building, which is right behind, and is also connected to the White House, but never had opportunity to go into the White House. Well, this is also covered with the reception with President Obama, which is a great, great deal. And so, I had opportunity to go out and, um, be briefed by more than eight of his advisors about new and upcoming deals. In my report to the council, I do have things spelled out, and also who briefed us from his, uh, his cabinet. And so, this will be on file for anyone's, um, reading. Um, I would like to say that I have been in contact with David Agnew, uh, and also Greg Nelson, um, and also a young lady that works on the local jobs council through, uh, the White House, and in trying to get them in some interest to South Bend, Indiana, and bring them here for South Bend, Indiana. They do traveling, uh, they do travel to different locations, localities, to look over what's going on in different localities. So, within this particular, uh, conversation I'm having with them, is to bring them up to date about a lot of things that we are doing in South Bend, Indiana, and create a new job market, to create more jobs for the working-class, uh, family. And so, um, we're working at bringing, uh, some of the advisors here, and so that they can get a good tour of what South Bend, Indiana has to offer, but also what our market can be, and also be example, uh, to the rest of United States of America. They've been to Boston, they've also been to Pittsburgh and some other cities as well, they're modeling to the rest of the world as this is what we're doing, this is new job growth in a high-tech industry, and the high-tech is within the manufacturing of ranks. And so, we have those examples already, uh, with New Career Academy, and also in some other places as well. So, we're, we're along the same lines of where the national government has gone, so there's just need to be some more synergy, some more dollars, and some more connectedness with the community here at large, and also with the national government as well. So, again, my report, again, is a few pages long, and if anyone wants to read it, it will be on file with the clerk's office as well, and I really appreciate the opportunity to go out there and represent South Bend, Indiana, being like the only person from Indiana part of the Young Electric Officials Network. Uh, I, I, it was an honor, it was a privilege, um, had opportunity to go in the White House. We, we have free reign of the, um, the first floor as well as the, um, bottom floor, and which was the basement, what they have like this magnificent theater room, painted all, it wasn't painted red, it was just draped with all red, red seats, it was just like, it was beautiful, that was the theater room. But upstairs, when you come down the ground floor, it's like an art gallery, and you have just like all these gifts from different, like, countries, of, uh, princesses and queens and what have you, past presidents of the United States of America. If anybody has the opportunity to go to the White House, do it, do it, because you would not, you would, you would be mad at yourself if you didn't go. And so, once a lifetime chance that I would have the opportunity to go out there, and I appreciate it. President Obama, uh, briefed us probably for about close to five or eight minutes, came down a real jazzed, you know, high energy, and, uh, he walked around the crowd, hung out with us, you know, for twenty, twenty-five minutes total, including with his, uh, briefing with us. So, we didn't have a huge amount of time to spend with the President of the United States of America, but we got a chance to meet him, we got a chance to talk to him, we got a chance to see him in the White House with the, uh, jazz band for the military. And so, it was just, it was a phenomenal, 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 phenomenal opportunity. And I will tell my grandkids about this, and the whole state will tell their kids about it, and I have some keepsake things, you know, and again, I thank the support of the South Bend Common Council, the city of South Bend. I represent well. Everybody knows Henry Davis of South Bend, Indiana, they know I represent District Two, and so they, everybody knows that. And so, I just had a great time. I had a really, really good time, and I really feel, uh, it was, again, it's a privilege. Now, kind of I feel like, you know, I'm worth something now. I went to the White House. So, again, thank you.
Congratulations, President. Congratulations. Any new business before this council?
Yes, ma'am.
To President Deere, I would like to, um, ask that the issue in terms of, um, lighting, lights for the various, I was really taken back and saddened in regards to the response that came forth from the administration. Unfortunately, no one hears from the administration. When we're looking at sixty thousand dollars and this issue has been addressed at least asked in two years, I see it as a public safety issue. I don't think that we would want any of our children to be in any type of situation that is not properly, you know, have the proper light. So, I would like for this issue to refer to the Public Health and Public Safety Committee, and that we would begin to ensure that somehow the answer that I heard was not acceptable for me. I don't know in terms of other council members, but the answer was not really, uh, the type of answer I think that we would want to have for, uh, any of our children within the city of South Bend. So, I'm asking if this comes to the Health and Public Safety Committee?
I want to, I want to support her. I want to support that motion, or her request, to send it to the Public Health and Public Safety Committee, but also with a, uh, I think a letter needs to be sent to the administration[1699.03] Safety Committee, but also with a, uh, I think a letter needs to be sent to the administration that this council will support that. Uh, I, I agree wholeheartedly that sixty thousand dollars, uh, was not a big fund. I, I thought it was a, uh, an unclear answer on where the funding was. He said the funding was there, but they had to do some, uh, logistic things, or fiduciary things in order to get the money appropriated. I think we need to send a letter both to the mayor, a copy to the controller, that whatever is necessary, we need to move with dispatch to see that this takes place. I'd like to see that letter draft, and also motion to support, uh, the chairman's, uh, conservating, uh, White's motion to put it in Health and Public Safety, but if there